Hi, Robert.
Huh?
It's here somewhere.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our special council meeting for June 3, 2025, at 5:54. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
If we can all please remain standing for a moment of silence for our first responders and military members, please. Thank you. May be seated. Roll call.
Roll call. Councilmember Upal.
President.
Councilmember Wallace.
President.
Mayor Moran.
Present.
For the record, Councilmember Roth and Mayor Protemp Semmer are not in attendance.
Thank you. So, we have citizen comments. We do have one item under discussion and potential action items. Is there any citizen comments on the phone? Hearing none. Is there any citizen comments in the chamber? Seeing none, closing the citizen comments at 5:55. Next, we have discussion and potential action items, number six, discussion on fiscal year 2025-2026 proposed budget.
Good evening, Mayor Protemp is absent. Members of the council, city staff, and members of the audience. My name is Happy Baines from the Finance Department, and today we'll be bringing you the fiscal year 2024-2026 proposed budget. The proposed budget was passed out to council and uploaded to our city website a few weeks ago. I would like to thank all the department heads and their respective staff for all the hard work and the countless hours they have put into this budget, and I appreciate all of you guys. The background on the fiscal year budget, fiscal year 2025-2026 budget must be adopted by June 30, 2025, and it covers the period from July 1, '25 through June 30, 2026. Components of the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget include the following: revenues, expenditures, general fund, special revenue funds, capital project funds, and enterprise funds. During the whole budget process, we have given our department heads a timeline to go off of. January 25, the budget instructions were provided to staff. February 25, preliminary expenditures inputted into our financial system. March 25, city manager and department budget reviews. May 12, city council provided proposed fiscal year 2025-2026 budget. May 25, proposed 2025-2026 budget posted to the website. May-June, budget discussions as needed, and June 17, we'll be bringing this item back to council for budget recommendation for adoption. So let's talk about the process on what all goes into putting into, put the budget together. Each department and its respective, respective employees or part of the department are given a deadline to input their budget into our software system to provide their initial requests. After the departments complete their budget request, Finance Department met with the city manager's office to go over the whole budget in detail, line by line. After this process was completed, at the city manager's office, along with the Finance Department, we're closely with the department heads to ask any follow-up questions we had pertaining to their budget. After meeting with the department heads as needed, we refined the revenues and expenditures with the second review by the city manager's office. So now let's get into the numbers. Citywide proposed revenues for 2025-2026 is estimated to be 64.8 million. Majority of our revenues for this upcoming fiscal year... be $64.8 million. Majority of our revenues for this upcoming fiscal year, fiscal year will be coming from our intergovernmental revenues, which is estimated to be $36.48 million. Charges for services, $12.6 million. Taxes, $9.9 million, and other small areas that make up the remaining revenues. So you guys might want to ask on what makes up the intergovernmental revenues. $27 million is from the grant from the state water projects, and $5.3 million of that total is the construction, continuation of the recplex. Citywide's proposed expenditures for 25-26 is $75.4 million. If we go back to a previous slide, our revenues are $64.8 million, difference of $6.6 million. So there's our revenues, $64.8, and then our expenditures are $75.4. The difference of $6.6 is all tied to capital projects, which I'll go over in a few, in the next few slides. As you can see, our big chunk of our budget is projects with $44.62 million, followed by $14.73 million in maintenance and operations, and $10.81 in personnel costs. Now we'll move into the general fund budget. General fund is estimated to be around $9.6 million in revenues. $5.16 of that consists of taxes, which make up the majority of the general fund revenues, followed by intergovernmental with $2.41, followed by other small charges for services, transfer in miscellaneous return of money and propositions, fines and forfeitures make up the remaining of the budget. So that $2.3, out of the intergovernmental, the $2.4, $2.3 of that comes from the state from our property and lieu taxes, and the remaining of the taxes are from property taxes that we can gain from our residents. We are presenting a balanced budget. Our revenue and expenses are both at $9.6 million. So out of the $9.6 million, $5.54 million of that goes to our police department, followed by admin services with $1.18 million, transfer out of $1.31. The $1.31 consists of a transfer out which the general fund subsidizes for our community development department and our rec department. So here is a list of our top 10 projects for all the funds for citywide. $27 million is for the Wells 8, 9, 13, and 17 project. Recplex has about $5.1. Well 18, $4.7. Well 8A, $2.6. Hammett and Campbell, $970K. Briarwood Lift Station, pulverizing and repaving Main, so then we have Max Foster Phase 1 and 2, and Max Foster Multi-Path. So these are the top 10 projects that are within the next fiscal year. Additional requests that are not included in the budget that council has in front of them, and basically this is an errata sheet. So after I gave the deadline to the department heads, these are items that came in after the fact that the deadline was done. When the budget is approved, these items will be incorporated within the final budget. I can go through line by line on this item, or if you guys want to kind of go through them, I can kind of go through them. So beautification artwork of citywide estimated $60K. ClearGov, this is a digital budget book that Councilmember Upal had requested, and this was already in the, I guess, working phases, we were already working on this. So after the fiscal year 26-25 budget does get approved, and this item gets approved, this will be a digital book online for residents and city staff. LMDs, $774. BADs, $1,265. Measure L Transfer Out. So the big item on the transfer out is during a council meeting when the Measure L item was presented, there was an adoption resolution passed that say that Measure L, once we get our monies in, that those funds will be reimbursed. So general fund will be getting reimbursed from the Measure L fund once we start getting that out, once we're getting that in. Measure L Contract Services, $12,500. What this is was a difference that we noted from what we budgeted for to the actual contract with the county. Revenue Stabilization Fund, we're transferring out $330,000 on this. So what this was, was we budgeted a higher amount for our taxes based on HDL's review back. That was the difference that we had based on it. So instead of kind of covering, reducing our services and stuff that, we just kind of had a bucket revenue stabilization fund on the side that we're taking out $330,000 for to make up the difference. The remaining bottom items right there, that's community development, the GIS map update, general plan update, estimated $20,000. Building permit module for Spring Brook estimated $12,250. Currently, we are using our consultants, they have their own program that they use. We pay them $1,000, $1,000 a month to use their program. We do have this within, incorporate within our Spring Brook system, so we do want to keep this in-house, so we have everything under our Spring Brook system. Multi-jurisdictional reviews, around $25K. Community development fee schedule study, around $30K. And our employee appreciation is around $15K. We do want to bring the employee appreciation back to the table, so we do kind of acknowledge our employees on all the good work they do. Next, I'll pass over the mic to Public Works for their presentation.
Good evening, council, members of the public. Anthony Chavada, Public Works. Council will be going over the Public Works budget. It will be very brief. I will not be going over my entire budget, because that will take the rest of the evening. As Brad likes to say, I'll be flying the plane at altitude of 10,000-foot elevation. Bear with me. Bottom three budgets are enterprise funds, water expense budget, or water enterprise budget, wastewater enterprise, and our sanitation enterprise. Top three are Public Works Administration Budget, Parks Budget, and Gas Tax. I'll be going over three projects and three equipment budget requests. If there is time at the end of the scheduled allotment here for the budget workshop, and if council wants Public Works to go over additional budgeted items or projects, I do have a backup PowerPoint presentation that I can share. Proposed vehicles and equipment. New playground equipment at Max Foster Sports Complex, requesting $165,000. That would be a cost share with LMDs and CFDs. This playground will be a new install at Max Foster Sports Complex, and it will be inclusive of special needs equipment. New insulated Versalift truck. This is a boom truck. That would be a cost share with the water enterprise, wastewater, Public Works Admin, CFDs, and LMDs. Everybody touches this truck as far as work, trim trees, hang banners, change light poles, post some lights, fixtures. Another new utility truck from the LMDs and CFDs. A couple of proposed projects. Pulverize and repave the Main Street from D Street to I Street. Engineers estimate there's $507,000. Cost shared by Measure V, 80%, and RMRA fund. Continue with our Arkellian Park restroom renovation project, $256,000 budgeted out of the, out of the CFD fund. Renovate Hammett Sewer Lift Station. Will be funded out of the enterprise, wastewater enterprise fund, and the continued project with the renovation of the Briarwood Sewer Lift Station, same fund, wastewater enterprise fund. That's pretty much it as far as the budget, some of the proposed items. As I said, if there's room toward the end, and if council wants me to go over further items that I budgeted for or requesting, I'm happy to do so, because I do have a backup PowerPoint.
Anthony, if we don't have time to do that this evening, could I get a copy of that presentation over email, please?
This one or the?
The backup one.
Backup one?
If we don't have time to go over it today?
Sure.
All right. Thank you.
Also, before the chief comes, I did want to recognize two of my employees in the back, Maribel and Addoville, Public Works Admin, and they're a huge part of the budget process. I couldn't do it without them. Myra, did I say Myra or Maribel? I'm sorry, Myra. You know, we spent many late nights at Public Works trying to put this budget together, and I just want to say thank you, and I appreciate them.
Members of the public, council members, I'm your police chief, Rick Schiff. Sitting with me is Deanna Soria, the person who actually knows what our budget looks like, and explains it to me every day, very clearly and very well. I didn't think that it would, it would be a disservice to not have her up here with me, given the amount of work that she's done and her vast knowledge of it. We'll start with Livingston Police Department's 25-26 Budget Proposal. We are keenly aware, members, that we are the largest user of the budget, almost $5.5 million. We're constantly aware of that. We are constantly doing what we can to mitigate our expenses, to be more efficient, be more cost-effective. Police Department personnel, the budget fully, is fully staffed right now. It's difficult to keep fully staffed, but we are and we expect to be throughout the summer. Our budget includes full staff and part-time members. The police assistance request to hire is a person that we just requested for this fiscal year, this coming fiscal year, that will be in our front foyer, helping citizens, providing them incident reports, dealing with tickets and so forth. The current situation has our dispatchers losing, losing focus as to what they're doing and paying too much time at the window. So it's a nine-to-five, Monday through Friday position, and we're very grateful to fund, and we could absolutely use. With reserve police officers additionally needed, I'm going to request that we change, or I'm going to ask the council members, to change the current number of paid reserve officers from two to five. There will no fiscal impact. We will have the same number of hours, but we'll be able to have more reserve officers. And one of the reasons for that is because there's a significant number of officers or people who want to keep what we call their post certification, police officers and standard certification, but they don't want to work half a week, a full week. They have full jobs. So we have one person that's been with us for 10 years. He works three to four Fridays a year. He's a wonderful resource, but we can't get people to do it two or three days each week. We can get maybe one or two days a week, maybe two days a month. So rather than try and find people to fill those positions, it's much easier for us to expand the number of paid reserves that we'll take and just have more of them. We had a critical incident this last Sunday. We could have, if we had a deeper reserve pool, we could have called more people in, and hopefully they would have been available to help us. So I do request that we change that number from two to five, and I want to emphasize that there is no fiscal impact in doing that. Merced County Health Grant, that's an example of one of the things that we do to try and mitigate the expenses. This is the school resource officer at Livingston Middle School and the three elementary schools. We pay, the grant pays, I believe, for the entire salary of the officer, and has for the last 10 years. Almost fully funded, and it's been ongoing for many, many years. The abandoned vehicle abatement is a grant. We have towed over 100, oops, we went to Flock. Okay. The Flock camera system, it's the ability to push, to identify and recover stolen vehicles. It also identifies for us, it's a blanket, a met blanket over the city for security. It tells us when people have come in the city, when they exit. So for burglars, any kind of crime, in addition to stolen cars, this helps us mark those people and locate them and arrest them. Once this system is well-known, it also prevents crime. People just know that it's unlikely they're going to get away with it. The abandoned vehicle abatement program has been going on for a number of years. I believe it's a 10-year grant. Yeah, so we're in our second, second year of a 10-year grant. We towed over 105 abandoned vehicles, derelict abandoned vehicles off the street in the last fiscal year. That's about average for us. You can see in this case, not only was it an abandoned vehicle, but it was being used for gang graffiti and so forth. Radio, the police radio project, we are at end-of-life for both our radio tower equipment, not the radio tower itself, but the equipment on the radio tower, and our personal handheld radios, as well as the radio in the cars. They are well over 10 years old. They are not encrypted, which means that they can be listened into by anybody. They can follow our tactics, know what our procedures are, know if we're approaching, and they also have very limited range, in addition to being end-of-life and falling apart, literally falling apart on us. The money for this project should be divided up, I believe we've divided it up between three CDF funds. So we're, and we are also pursuing grants to try and mitigate that expense. Motorola, the prepared, the preferred supplier of radios, does have grants. So we're pursuing them as they become available. Annual police equipment projects tends to be the increase, the significant increase in our budget. For instance, the Axon tages, tasers, we're on an old model. They are electric devices, kind of like your cellphone in the sense that they wear out over time. The battery life ends, and they need to be replaced. They are at end-of-life, so we are upgrading on a lease project to go to the new Model 7. The range repairs, so for the last number of years, the range has not been properly upkeep. The upkeep hasn't been done on it, so we are now bringing it back up to a standard, preventing the rust, and painting it, cleaning it up, and making it more usable. Remember that a number of the outside agencies do come and lease the equipment there for us, which goes into the general fund. Department training. For the last number of years, department training has not been what it should be. We should have more accident investigation tools among our officers. In other words, professionals that have been trained in advanced accident investigation. We've had a number of accidents recently where we had to outsource to the CHP because we simply weren't qualified to handle them. That's just a question, our officers are competent enough. It's simply a question of providing them with the training. There's a number of officer survival training that hasn't been done, that should have been done. And also, we've had several critical incidences involving barricaded suspects in our houses. That is a very specific training, and it is a perishable skill. If an officer isn't constantly training to deal with people with mental health issues, they are not going to be as effective. So we have training on June 11 and June 25 already scheduled to start in on that training to advance their knowledge and their experience. Flock cameras, I believe. Bulletproof vests is a matching grant, so it's obviously an officer safety requirement. It's not something that we can get beyond. Also, bullet-resistant vests are timed out. The Kevlar falls apart after a certain number of years, so as we get to the expiration date, we are required to change them. Okay. If there are any questions, we look forward to answering them. No? Do we have one more?
Chief, I have a question.
I'm sorry.
The insurance cost, if I read it right...
The insurance cost, if I read it right, went up $30,000, more for the year '25-'26, if I read that right in the budget, and your rent leases went from $106,000 to $201,000, if I went through the budget right. And I know a big part of your police department increases PERS, which I had a long talk with RC over that, that went up for every department. So I expected the PERS to go up on it, and then it did. But I have, the rent leases stuck out, the insurance costs, and then it goes back before your time, in '23-'24, there were no impact fees, but this year for '25-'26, you got $220,000. So I'm just wondering, what, can you tell us more about the impact fees and why the insurance went up $30K? You've got the expert right there.
I'm going to abdicate to the expert on that, but I can say that the lease, the rent fees include equipment.
Yes, so the insurance cost, that's built in by Gov Invest, so it's just an automatic number. We don't input that particular number. It's built in by the software that is within Springbrook, from our RMA, from our insurance company.
Okay.
The rents and leases, the significant increases there are, we did request the additional flock cameras, in fact, there's an additional 10 flock cameras within that particular line item, as are the tasers, the taser project is in that particular line item as well. So the rents and leases covers all of the flock cameras. By the end of next fiscal, we will have 28 cameras covering the city. Currently, we have 18, so we're just requesting the additional 10. The tasers, and it's our year five-of-five for our Axon body cameras and in-car vehicle camera system, so we're within that contract still, and then our copier lease, so that's all the line items within the rents and leases.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Mr. Mayor? Thank you, Chief. Sorry I'm late, everybody, by the way, but I kind of caught the tail end of the personnel, but one of the new positions you're proposing is the police public assistant?
That's correct.
What is the cost of that?
I'm sorry?
What is the cost of that?
We actually tried to look at it, I looked for it today. It went into the budget, and it was done, unfortunately, the person that could have answered that question for us is sick today. The person who figured out what that cost was, was our human resources director.
We can get back to you on that.
Yeah, but we can get back on that number.
Yeah, because that's, and then also...
It's not a particularly high-paying job.
Yeah, I understand, I'm just asking a simple question, because I couldn't find, because I see the total increase in the overall budget from the previous year, but it doesn't break down what the position is.
Right.
And that's, and also, I noticed that, and this is part of the regular item, it looks like you own the consent calendar tonight, ours purchases and everything, and most of this money came from salaries not used, just what is that savings all of a sudden we have? If we didn't, can somebody explain that to me?
We need to, I need to focus on the 2526 budget, so we can get that done.
Yeah, but, because that, well, it kind of goes along with, because I'm trying to get the grasp of the overall budget, so I'm just trying to figure out where was that savings from, and if we had that savings, yeah, our budget reflects even higher. So I'm just trying to figure out, if we had that money we didn't use, why is it still here? You know, and I'm just trying to understand this, that's all, you know?
Well, let me try, and let's see if I'm getting close. When I first came here, we were understaffed by two or three officers. We terminated an officer, we wound up being short a sergeant, so pretty quickly, we, or let's say, we were not using our full budget. As compared to this fiscal year, where we'll have full staffing, all the positions filled, there won't be any extra money left in our budget, but over this last year, because we were short officers and because it takes us so long to do the background, and dispatchers as well, I'm sorry, so it's a combination of officers and dispatchers, we do the same background for both, it takes a long time to do it, so even just to fill a position would take three months.
Yeah, and then...
That's what left the surplus.
If I can get, what was the salaries not used from the previous fiscal year, and what the impact is going to be, you know, with full-funded personnel-wise, can I also get that number, please?
Yeah, the salaries that were not used, what, the reason for it, from last year?
Yeah, and the amount, the total amount, and, you know, I just need to, I'm just trying to get the overall picture of...
Yeah, we also, the chief of police position wasn't filled until October, so there was a four-month period there as well. I know we had an interim chief of police, but there was another position, oh, I'm sorry.
When the interim police, the lieutenant was the interim police, so his salary wasn't being paid, so one of our salaries, either his or mine, wasn't being paid for that period of time.
Got it.
We can get that number for you.
Yeah, no, I just need to know, and then also, you said that you would like to add more reserves officers, just, and you said there's no fiscal impact at all?
No, the vision for the reserves of officers is that there would be two paid reserve officers who would work a minimum of two days a week, but we really haven't been able to find that. What we can find are people who want to keep their certification but want to work 20 hours a month. So they're well-trained, they're qualified police officers, but they don't want to put in as much dedicated time to being a police officer as half a week, every week, they have other jobs, so...
And the 20 hours or whatever, I don't want to put a dollar an hourly amount on them, but they're not requesting any pay for that?
No, these, we have unpaid reserve spots. These are paid reserve spots, so if it's a certain amount of money, it will be the same money pool shared between more people, because we simply didn't have enough people who are interested in coming and being reserves for that many hours. We needed them, we just couldn't find them. There is a niche of people that we've identified who are qualified, who want to come, want to maintain their certification, but again, don't want to make even the halftime commitment. So rather than continue to chase the unicorn, what we'd like to do is go after that niche and go after those people who are willing to come three, four days a month, and then we'll just have more of them. One of the side benefits is when we have a critical incident, we have a longer list to pull from, a longer list of people calling in, police come in, it's an emergency.
Okay, and then I do understand what overtime salaries are, but can I get a number for somebody, how much was actually used last year or this fiscal year? Please?
Now, a quick word about overtime salaries. When we came in, we were down two, three officers. What that means is that, A, we couldn't send them into training because there would be nobody left on the street, and when we did, and there is some mandatory training we have to send people to, when we sent them to them, we had to force overtime both for the dispatchers and the officers.
Yeah, the reason I'm asking is overtime, because, you know, usually if you're short-staffed, usually you have to have somebody hold over, they cover for court days, or whatever happens to be, you know? If we're fully staffed, then does this overtime salary still make sense? If you're going to be fully staffed on the other side, should these salary overtime still should go higher, or should it? I'm just trying to get those numbers, okay?
Arguably, the overtime, your salary should go lower.
I know, but you're requesting more than the previous year, so that was my question there, okay?
I'm going to speak for Deanna, but my expectation is that we're doing that because we have very little experience being fully staffed, and we also, remember, when I say fully staffed, we have officers who are on probation, they could be terminated. There's no way for us to really know what next year looks like until we experience it.
Yeah, and all these questions, I'm just trying to get a grasp of the overall budget, I'm not saying one thing and one of the other, okay? Just for my own understanding, and as far as your, can you go back on those slides a little bit? Yeah, right there. I don't see any reason why we shouldn't be doing that, I think those are good things to have, you know? I, for one, would never, ever deny our officers any kind of safety equipment. I am always for whatever training we can get them, additional training, you know, I'm for that, because better trained, less risk, I am for that, so you know, I am, I understand that, you know?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions this time? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council, members of staff, members of the public. Miguel Galvez, contract planner with J.B. Anderson. The community development department consists of planning division, building division, engineering division, three divisions, just for the purposes of the public. The planning division deals with current planning, applications, use permits, rezones, subdivision maps, it deals with long-range planning, general plan amendments, housing element updates, zoning ordinance updates, and we also staff the planning commission. When it comes to the building division, staff is involved with plant check review and construction inspections out in the field. When it comes to engineering services, the engineering services are provided both in public works but also in planning. Engineering services deal with entitlement review, they deal with construction administration, infrastructure project review, they also deal with utility planning and impact fee studies. Let me, here's the budgets for each of the sections, for the planning services, building services, engineering services. Those are primarily for staff costs. Planning services, those are for the existing staff, the senior administrative services, analysts, and then myself. For planning services and engineering services, these are reimbursable costs that are tied to project costs, so when an application comes in, any costs that are associated with reviewing that, processing, those are charged back to the applicant through a deposit based budget, and so there's minimal impact to the city's general fund. When it comes to general planning services, those are charged to the city, those deal with everything from responding to inquiries and reviewing building permits, business licenses, things like that. The major costs for this upcoming year has to do with the general plan update, the housing element update. When we focus on the general plan, we're going to begin to bear down on that effort. Actually, we have a general plan item being scheduled to the next city council meeting. The planning commission has met on May 13th, and they come up with a preferred land use alternative, that will be presented to the city council. Once the preferred land use alternative is presented to the city council and a preferred land use alternative is adopted, then this consultant will begin in earnest to really bear down on that and kind of look at, what does the circulation look like, what does the environmental assessment look like, and then we'll also begin to prepare our master plans, our sewer infrastructure master plan, our sewer master plan, stronding master plan. Along with that, we have the housing element, as you know, the housing element is also being prepared by a different consultant, Rincon. That has been submitted to the state, we're in our second round of interviews, the state has required additional revisions, and so one of the items that is involved to the housing element update is, not only do we have to update that, or update our programs, we also have to, as part of implementation, we have to do some additional ordinance amendments to our municipal code, but we also will have to be doing a number of general plan amendments and rezones to redesignate property from, you know, R1 or low-density residential to a higher-density residential, to really result in more affordable housing. So there's additional costs associated in our department, really with implementation of the general plan, the housing element update, the master plans. The other thing that staff is going to be looking at is spending time to actually update our development impact fees. When it comes to the general plan and our engineering services, once we know what the city's build-out will be in terms of infrastructure plan, that's going to be able to put the city in a position where we can identify our AB 1600 fees and really update our impact fees for the whole city, we can identify what we need to grow, and then, once that's adopted, then when development comes in, they'll be paying their respective fair share. So that's another important service that the engineering services department is going to be adding as part of the general plan update. Overall, it's an increase of about $524,000 from last year, but as I mentioned, a lot of this is really to carry out some of the long-range planning activities that we have for the upcoming year. That pretty much concludes an overview of the community development department, I can go into any details if you like.
Counsel, any questions? So, just real quick, I know you already explained the difference in the budget request for this upcoming year, roughly it's about $525,000, and is this because some of the studies have to be, is this the first time that they're going to be done, or they need to be redone because they're too old or outdated, or?
They have to be updated, absolutely right. Our current general plan is based on 1999, that's the one that is valid. We did have an update in 2008, which was overturned, so anything that was associated with that 2008 general plan is really void, and so we have to kind of say, okay, what's our new general plan, and what are all the design standards, all the requirements associated with updating that, and so we need to have a new environmental review, new policies and goals, really, is to do a comprehensive update of our general plan.
I'm, well, I don't think I explained myself accurately or correctly, I mean, with anything that was done, if anything was done within the last four or five years? Or is this going to be something totally new that we were supposed to be having?
We started the process, so the city has, we hired a consultant, and they did a number of outreach efforts to kind of solicit input from the community to help develop vision and statements of what it should look like. So we have started the process, we have incurred costs, but really, we're probably about one quarter of the way through. Now we're going to begin in earnest to really bear down, it's like, okay, let's look at, what does our city look like, and how should we grow, where should we grow? And, you know, not only is it, we need to kind of redo our land use plan, but only get into the details of what it's going to take to make that happen, identifying goals, policies, and standards for development, and that takes time, and it takes a lot of community involvement, which, you know, we're prepared to do.
Got it, thank you. Anything else, counsel?
I was going to add something there. As, you might want to touch on, you know, that as part of all of this, and it's something you had asked before, Mayor, in terms of the municipal services reviews, you know, when those are triggered, and that's something that we're going to have to do, that LAFCO actually has a contracting agency that then they go out and do that study for us, and those roughly run about 50 grand as well.
That's true. When the city expands its sphere of influence, one of the things that's required is, as the city manager mentioned, a comprehensive municipal service review. Are we capable of providing services to that new area? And as the city manager mentioned, yes, the LAFCO has a say in approving that. We really need to show that we can provide services to this new growth area. That's part of the general plan update overall.
Got it, thank you. Counsel, anything else? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. We have a colorful presentation for you tonight. We just wanted to remind everybody on what the responsibilities of the recreation department is, and then it kind of gives you an idea on where the costs come in as related. So you know, in our youth sports program, we have basketball, baseball, softball, soccer, flag football, and this year, we've brought back since COVID, our swim team. We have contract classes, ballet, folkloric, hip-hop, bhangra, and we have two new classes that will be beginning soon, we have drum lessons and musical instrument lessons. Our special events include the Splash of Color Run, the Fourth of July Festival, Sweet Potato Festival, Fall Street Fair, Court of Trees, and our Lighted Christmas Parade. Summer swim classes and open swim. Other responsibilities... Other responsibilities that the department works with other departments as well as deals with ourself is facility rentals, residential rentals, leagues and waivers, liaison with the schools, with the museum, adult sports management, city website management, recreation online registration, and finance reconciliation concessions, Safe and Same Firework Stands, our Parks Recreation and Arts Commission, music in the park, partnerships with nonprofits and businesses, special requests for facilities via council and administration, our recplex, background check management with our volunteers, and work orders for facility repairs. Our staffing, we have two full-time employees, one permanent, part-time, and one is requested this year. And we have 40 seasonal part-time program-specific employees like our umpires, and all of these are from 15-year-olds. And I think our oldest one is older than me. So what I did was I just put down, boy, and that's in microscopic, the funds that are reflecting increase. There is a $53,000 increase in our salaries in our department. And this is not Tony or my salary. It is for additional support staff in other departments. We have our part-time salaries, which is permanent. We are requesting an additional part-time person that can really help us with our adult sports programming and follow up with our coaches, and we have a lot of those. And the following ones with no explanation are all things that have been given to us through Gov Invest, so I could not really give you an explanation as to what each one of those entail. We are up about $300 for our contracted services, and that's our rec desk program and the fees that are associated with it. Let's see. Our utilities, again, that's not something that we actually budget for. It comes kind of handed over. And then we do have, on our facilities O&amp;M, we have an increase of $3,000, which may or may not be used. It's anticipated of any repairs that may need to be done at the senior center. And then all of our baseball fields have not had any new cinder mix in a long time. So we are hoping if this budget is passed, we will be able to put field dressing on our baseball fields. Insurance, those are all things that were handed over to us. And in our flag football, we do have an increase of $1,000, but it is for the purchase of scoreboards and more field equipment. And that is very simple, and we welcome any feedback or comments.
Counsel, any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Jackie, I have a couple. I know your salaries part-time went from basically $18,000 to $36,000. And that's because?
We're requesting.
New pay or just how many new employees?
It would just be one more permanent part-time. So we have one, which is half of the $18,000.
Okay. And then you're, on the Fourth of July, you went 24, 25, you said it was $38,000, and then you've left it $38,000 again for '25, '26. Is the fireworks separated out of that $38,000? Or is the $38,000 the total? Because I thought last year we gave more to that they could use. It was either 50 or 60,000, wasn't it? For the Fourth of July?
And part of the Fourth of July, I believe, is in you guys' budget. So this is a one-day event. If you guys determine that you want to go bigger or whatever, then we will have to look at that.
Okay. For your utilities, '22, '23, it was $53,000 was your actual. '23, '24 was $44,000. Yet you're only at budgeting for $40,000. You've never been under, you've never had a year, last two or three years, less than that. But yet you're only asking for 40 again? I would be surprised you wouldn't have increased that.
So our utilities, I don't make the decision on the utilities?
Utilities, you went from $33,000 basically to $40,000, which, like I said, you, actuals in '22, '23 was $53,000. '23, '24 was $44,000. So you want only $40,000 again? Utilities didn't go down. I would have assumed that would have been an increase there. And if it's here, I missed it, but I didn't catch it that way. I thought just the opposite. Between having you would, can I still want to holler later? So it's just those couple of questions.
Happy's going to be happy to give you that answer.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel, anything else? Thank you. Gracias, Jackie.
Gracias.
So just for, Mr. Wallace, for your question for Jackie's current year-to-date, for this fiscal year, Jackie is around $41,000 right now. So we anticipate she has one more month of June left, estimating around $2,000 for that. So that's why we kept it at the savings, at what the current's at right now. So that does conclude the presentation for the department heads. We do have around 15 minutes. If he has had any individual questions for the department heads, we'd be happy to answer them as needed.
Counsel, anything, any other specific questions?
Mr. Mayor, no specific questions on any line items for any of our departments. However, I do want to let you know that I plan to be in your inboxes over the next couple of weeks, leading up to the June 17th meeting, where we may adopt as a group. Just wanted to make a couple of comments. Monica, do you think you could pull up the image I had sent you at this time? First things first, really appreciate staff putting this together on time. It's June 3rd. We have 27 days to get this approved, so I'd say we're relatively on track. Walked in, and I saw a few staff members look very tired today. It's a little, I mean, it sucks to see, to be honest, but also, I know you've been working very hard on this. Anthony, you mentioned a comment that you, ladies next to you, spent a lot of late nights. And so I always respect the fact that all of you that work for a public agency, you probably don't have to be here. You could probably be working somewhere else and not have to put in as many hours and save your community, but you choose to do what you do, and it means a lot for us. And so I want to thank you for that. Had a conversation today with our finance folks about budget, and we kind of discussed this, and I just wanted to be very transparent about the mindset that I'm bringing in to this budget. I just like to maximize every penny that we spend as a city. And I was discussing with finance, essentially, this matrix, very simple, but splitting our requests into wants and needs, and then looking at what's low cost and what's high cost. And Counsel, you can tell me how you feel about this, or if it's something that we may want to see broken down further, but obviously, things that we need and that are low cost, essentially, a Goldilocks zone. We need it to function, and it's not going to cost a lot. We want to move in that direction. And then the opposite corner of that is things that we want don't necessarily need, and they cost a lot. Probably want to avoid those. I don't know how feasible it is for you all. I would like to get in touch with the department heads about this over the next couple of weeks, but it would be very helpful for me to break down some of the specific requests and see how they fall within this matrix. I know that you guys have already cut down from a $600,000 initial deficit in the general fund, so you've already done so much trimming, and you may not be able to trim more. I would like to have that discussion if that's the case, but I would really like to separate out as much as possible to get an idea of what is an absolute need? What do we need to function this year? Or what are we risking if we don't get something this year versus we might be able to get by without this? Or this is just super helpful to have. And it doesn't mean that I wouldn't encourage things in the other direction, but like I mentioned in some of the meetings we had this morning, we're in a pretty precarious position with our fire services and with our recplex. I don't want the city to be in a spot where we have to pull out of our reserves to fund those projects, but just depending on how things go, it is a possibility over the next couple of years, and I want us to plan for that and account for that. And so I wanted to be transparent about the mindset that I'll be bringing into this. We'll be in touch with you all over the next couple of weeks, and I just appreciate all the work that you've put in to get us to where we're at now. Thank you, and thanks, Monica, for getting this up.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I have a question on domestic wastewater. Anthony, you want to handle it? We won't talk about the engineer going to be buying a bunch of donuts or something because he got a nice increase according to your budget. Anthony, on your budget, yours, the only department that the peres went down, asking for less than last year? Is that you've gotten rid of some old timers or retired? You've got newer folks, so their peres isn't as high?
Yeah, we did have a retiree recently. As the chief said, Indiana said previously, the department heads don't really get to touch the salaries, the benefits. That's all calculated in the Gov Invest with finance, but that is one of the reasons we did have a retiree.
Thank you. And then one other question. What's the TDA Fund, 1201?
Transportation.
TDA Fund 1201. There was nothing for it in '24, '25, or '25, '26. It doesn't, it's a TDA Fund listed as 1201, but I didn't see anything in the budget for the last two years.
Transportation Development Act, LTF. Yeah, and we have.
So the reason why we haven't got any of this is because MCAG has put a hold on this, and there is no, when reaching out to MCAG, they mentioned to us that they won't know until May if the jurisdiction is going to get any LTF funds. So we didn't budget anything in there because we were unsure if we're going to get anything per MCAG.
Okay. That will answer it all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. And then Happy, one other thing while you're still there. Can you send me a copy of which departments are going over budget right now before the end of, before July 1st?
Yeah, I'll send it over to you.
Thank you. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Actually, thank you for everyone to, answering some of the, a lot of the questions that I had with this, not necessarily with this budget, but just a lot of the numbers. I think this is budget number five that I had to work with since I got elected, and there's a lot that I'm still learning about all the different funds and a lot of the numbers. But I think some of the questions that I had earlier with staff would be beneficial because not everybody, well, one thing, not everybody, and I'm not sure if everybody has a copy of the actual printed budget out in the community, which is probably just us, but is there one online? Right? Okay. And then, and then just thinking, is it possible to have this in, to be able to be shown on the screen? If it's there, it's fine, but if, but for sure, for next, the next time that we bring it back, but if it's there? Okay, perfect. So if, I think there are a couple of things that are important because I had some questions that some residents asked, and I think it's important to clarify. If, so you can see how you can go to the budget online, and if you can go, once you get there, Monica, if you can go to page 25, once it downloads, go to page 25, please. You can just input it up there. Yeah. No, maybe not. Yeah, right there. Okay. So if you look, it's going to be very tiny, but the second section on the left, it's special revenue, and the first line, 1120, it's, thank you, community development. And so the estimated balance, if you look right next to it, to the right, the number, the 846619 in parentheses. My question was, it's like, how come, or where does this number come from? Because later on, if you look at the total revenue, we're looking at $1.3 million, and then total expense, $1.3 million, plus or minus a few dollars. And then we're expected to end up at 844, 684 in the negative. But I think you guys had a very good explanation of why we began with that number in the negative. And, you know, can you explain that? I mean, I already have the answer, but I think it's important.
So for the community development, starting off estimated as 7125 is coming in as a negative $846,619. So this is cumulative over years and years of basically, the community development basically not subsidizing itself. So right now, if you see, you guys do see a transfer in to the community development, transfer out of the general fund, but that's only to, I guess, for the current fiscal year to balance that out. It's not for the previous years that it's been in the negative as a whole. So as of this day, we have not addressed that negative 846. So as you see, going across that same line item, as the mayor mentioned, we're getting $2,000 more than what we currently have, meaning that we're slowly kind of, you know, making it go down as needed, but it's going to be the development fees study that's going to probably going to bring that amount down.
Thank you. And I think it's important to realize and keep this in mind as we move forward, whenever the time comes to look at any rate study, you know, if we don't do it right, or if people here don't do it right, that's what happens, you know? So we don't want to be on the red, or we don't want to be in the negative. But I think it's also very important to, you know, this is, this has been an accumulation from years past, you know? But still, thank you for saving those $2,000. But $2,000, it's helpful, you know? But, so that was one question that was brought to my attention, and this is very helpful having, being able to show it here. And I don't want to go into every question that I had, but there are some that I think are important. Give me one second. If you had a chance to see all my little sticky notes. If you can go to page 112. Probably, let's see, 112, is that it? No, that's right below, okay, right there. So if you look at, where's this, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, line item number 12, which is the Public Works Admin Expanse. So if you look all the way to the right, this is, I see a number for 2012, 354. And so that similar line item is in different funds, right? Happy? And Public Works 46, I'm sorry, 4563, and the last four. Okay. So I think it'll be helpful to be able to explain, you know, because I don't know what this was and why this is the first year or first budget that we're looking at this, and how you're going to be able to, or anybody that looks at the budget is going to be able to see similar line items within, with the same title, but in different funds.
So what we did for next fiscal year for Public Works Admin, which is So, what we did for next fiscal year for Public Works Admin, which is coming from the General Fund Department 105, so basically what we did is this, I guess the cost of that shouldn't be coming out of the General Fund. So, what we did is, we looked at their respective departments for administrative, basically like they take care of gas tax, they take care of water, sewer refuse. So, the total department cost of 105 is segregated out into the various departments that they cover, so that's what that item, the amount is.
Other than that, I think those were some of the main questions that I had, just for clarification, and especially with some of the items that were not on the budget in prior years, that, at least for me to be able to understand what they were. Counsel.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Happy to clarify, this expense was coming out of the General Fund previously, and we've now put it into different funds depending on.
Yes, so, so we're basically saving the General Fund around $715,000, and that's coming in from the various funds, water, sewer, garbage, gas tax, I think LMDs is part of it. So, it's basically what the admin people that are being charged, the 105 department, is being brought in from the different departments or different funding sources.
Thank you. A couple, two more quick comments. First, Counsel, you can tell me how you feel about this, but I definitely wanted to state it. I would request that we remove the word honorable when addressing Counsel in the introduction. I've never been a fan of it, and I think it's unnecessary. The second comment I'd like to make is, one of the largest, biggest requests that I get from folks in the community related to parks is switching out wood chips for like little rubber pieces. I'm not even 100% sure what they are, but that is by far the biggest request that I get from folks that I talk to. I would, I will be in touch with staff in the next couple of weeks about exploring a cost for that and seeing if it's feasible to get that into this budget.
Thank you.
Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I'd just like to thank all the department heads for this presentation. I know you guys put a lot of hard work in it, a lot of, a lot of hours, so, thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you mentioned, this is your fifth time going through the budget. I've gone through enough times to where I'd like to thank Happy, Brad, previously Vicky and others. They got me pretty good at reading the budget. The all-in challenge I have year after year is, I don't know if these funds are getting smaller, or am I getting, on the budget, I mean, these numbers are getting smaller and smaller, so. But I do want to say, you know, there can be some minor tweaks, you know, tweaks we're going to, Counsel is going to request, but overall, I think it's a very well-prepared budget. I did talk to Anthony and others, hey, about the difficulty we're going to, we may have. We don't know what the challenge is going to be from the heads in the state, that we need to really buckle down and try to be very conservative as we can, and I do want to thank the city manager and the staff and everybody for what it looked like. It's a pretty conservative budget. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, so, it is, it is my understanding that this is, this will come back, or the other, the other, the other, or the next time that this will come back, possibly for approval, will be in two weeks at our next June meeting, June 17 meeting, and then, so, we have two weeks, or people out in the community have two weeks for, for them to be able to review this budget and then see if you guys have any questions. Last night I was watching, it's not like, it seems like I don't have enough things to watch, meetings to watch, I was watching the Mercedes City Council Meeting for fun, yeah. And I, I think the most interesting part was the budget, that we were, you know, just like working with the budget, and I like to say that our budget looks really good, and, but we also have to be mindful of, and be, stay conservative, because we don't know what's going to happen with the next, you know, two, three years, and we want to be mindful that, and be prepared that in case of emergencies, we're able to be able to stay open and keep everybody in place and not have to be forced to let anybody go, because I'm seeing a lot of other agencies having to do that, and because of budget problems. So, I am always very mindful of being very conservative when it comes to budgets. Ideally, you know, we always want to have a 20% of our budget in reserves, but, you know, at least 10%, 10%, 12%, because, and if we do anything less than that, I think we're only required by law to do, what, 5% or 6%? But anything above 10% to 20%, it's, it's, it's very good, and, and we should be safe, and at least to get us through some emergencies for six to, six to 12 months. So, sometimes, like Mr. Upal was mentioning, we have to look at what are, what are the needs to be able to keep moving forward, and what are the wants? You know, I wish I could go to Hawaii for three months, that's a want. Is that a need? Probably not. Well, that's what my wife tells me, is it's not a need, it's a want, so, but, you know, just got to be thinking about, about long-term, the long-term planning and not just short-term. So, Counsel, is there any other questions, comments in regards to the budget? Good, all right. So, at this time, I will call for public comment. Is there anyone on the phone, public comment in regards to the budget? Here and now, coming back into the chamber, is there anyone in the chamber with public comment in regards to the budget? Seeing now, closing the public comment at 7:05, and with that, we are. All right, and, and so just for information, we do have our, part of our closed session at the end after the regular, regular meeting, and right now, we're finishing, unless you guys, you guys don't need a break, right? No? Okay, all right, just want to make sure. So, we're going to go into a regular meeting at 7:06, and can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance since we're starting a regular meeting?
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Can we please all stand for the, for a moment of silence for our first responders and military members, please? Thank you, maybe Seereen. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Roth.
Present.
Councilmember Upal.
Present.
Councilmember Wallace.
Present.
Mayor for Tim Semer.
Present.
Mayor Moran.
Present.
For the record, our council members and mayor are in attendance.
Thank you. Counsel, are there any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, can I, is it possible that I move my public comments up for a special item that city managers aware of? It's not on your agenda.
All right, so yours, so your council member comments, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I'd like to move that up.
To where?
To now, if possible.
Oh, now? Okay. Okay, so, we would need a motion in a second?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All right, roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Roth.
Yes.
Councilmember Upal.
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace.
Yes.
Mayor for Tim Semer.
Yes.
Mayor Moran.
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of 5-0.
Jason.
A month or so ago, Livingston Middle School, go ahead, you do that.
Do you need a mic because everyone here, you?
A month or so ago, Livingston Middle School had to borrow cornhole stuff for one of their ventures that they had going on. They had asked for people to volunteer. They had one person volunteer a cornhole set. So, Anthony, can I get your help? There should be some presence coming out for that young lady right there who's been on the Parks and Rec Commission forever. So, I bought two myself, and then I talked Jason into matching me, so we have four more cornhole units to give to the Livingston Middle School.
Enjoy.
Anything for the kids. Thanks, guys. I want to thank everyone. As they know, I've been with the Parks and Rec Commission now for five years, and I'm also the PTO President, started that four years ago with the middle school with COVID happening. I wanted to get parents involved. So, I really appreciate this because I do volunteer 97% of my time. I just got done with my son's baseball game at, at the little guy's field and came right here, so this is going to be used for our middle school. We're actually probably going to use them tomorrow for our graduation party that we're going to have after, but we do a family picnic and invite all the parents out at the end of the year to celebrate and have two hours with their kids, and we do games and prizes, so, thank you guys so much. Aw, you guys.
Glad we could help, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Congratulations.
All right, Counsel, is there any other changes to the agenda? So, if I, if, if it's okay with the Counsel, if we can move item number three under awards and presentations and proclamations to be number one, so it would be the presentation by Mr. Doug McAllister, Vice President, External Affairs Frontier, and then we can have the other two items after that, if you guys are okay with that. Just the order. Okay?
Do we need a motion? All motions approved?
I'll second it.
Mr. McAllister, how many minutes do you think you need?
I want the three as possible.
All right. Okay, yeah, only because we have a special request, so I think we'll go ahead and leave you on, as, as the third presenter, only because we have some time limitations, yeah. Okay.
All right, so I'm going to resent.
I'll resent my motion, yeah.
Thank you. All right, so I have no changes to the agenda. Anybody else? Seeing now, all right, so we're moving forward. At this time, we have citizen comments. Is there any citizen comments on the phone in regards to items on the agenda? Here. On, on items not on the agenda, correct. Anyone on the phone? Here and now, coming back into the chamber, is there any citizen comments in the chamber?
Good evening, Counsel. Is it on? Yeah. Dear members of the City Council, I am writing to formally resign from my position of, of the City of Livingston Planning Commission effective immediately. After careful consideration, I have determined that my current and upcoming development projects, along with other business interests in the city, may present ongoing conflicts of interest. While I am grateful for the opportunity to serve, I believe it is in the best interest of the city and the commission that I step down to avoid the need for frequent recusals on significant matters. I look forward to continuing to contribute to the city's growth as a resident, business owner, investor, developer, and remain committed to Livingston's future success. Thank you again for the opportunity to serve.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your service.
And I had emailed this to the GIAF.
Thank you. Is there any additional citizen comments in the chamber? Seeing now, closing the citizen comments at 7:14. Next, we have awards, presentations, and proclamations. First, we have presentation by Burke, Williams, and Sorensen, LLP. So, at this time, we have introduction and proposed legal services.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You can adjust the microphone to your pleasing, or you can even take it out if it's better for you.
Okay, that works. Okay. Good evening, Counsel. My name is Mark Barasa Tran. I'm with the law firm of Burke, Williams, and Sorensen, my colleague.
Leah Castella, nice to meet you all.
And we did email a PowerPoint presentation, I don't know if it's available for our use. Okay, next slide, please. All right, so here's an overview of what the, we'll be discussing today. We're going to summarize our proposal and introduce the Livingston core team. We'll be addressing why Burke is distinct and potentially how we can improve legal Next slide, please. So, Burke is a one-stop shop. There's very few, if any, legal issues relating to public law that we haven't addressed as a firm. We provide excellent and timely legal advice. We also provide unparalleled customer service and at a very reasonable fee structure which reflects our clientele, public agency clients, which of course use public dollars, and we do our part to protect the public fisc. Next slide, please. Okay, so in terms of the proposed team for Livingston, there'd be city attorney, I'd be stepping into that role, the planning commission component, we'll have labor and employment council, these type of franchising issues that might arise, code enforcement, litigation, housing, elections, as well as our litigation folks. About a decade of public law experience at this point, I previously served as a city attorney for the city of Adelanto, and the assistant city attorney for the cities of Bell Gardens and La Puente. Those were, of course, down in Southern California. Extremely well-versed in the Brown Acts and conflict of interest laws, land use and planning issues, and I have substantial experience in all aspects of public law.
And that is me, even though you might not recognize it since the picture is old and my hair is much longer. So, I'm Leah Castella. I am on the proposal as the assistant city attorney, and we structure proposals that way because we do think it is really important for all of our clients to make sure that you have constant and consistent representation, and no one person is always available, but two people are typically always available. I have been practicing, even that is a little wrong, it's probably closer to 25 years now, which I don't like to admit, but about 15 years of experience in public law. I have extensive experience as a general counsel. I don't have a, I don't work as a city attorney right now, but I'm the general counsel for two wastewater sanitary districts and one water district. That's part of why I joined in this proposal, because you do have very robust water and wastewater utilities, which is something I have a lot of expertise on. I represent Union Sanitary District in Fremont, Central Contra Costa Sanitary District in Martinez, Ironhouse Sanitary District in Oakley, and Valley of the Moon Water District in Sonoma County, right outside of Sonoma. Next slide. I'm going to go quickly through the rest of our team, and, and one thing I will say is, sometimes when you see a lot of names, it makes it seem like we're just throwing a lot of people at it, and that costs more money. But what we have learned in our extensive experience representing public agencies is that having folks with. is that having folks with specific types of expertise is the best way to provide efficient service to our city clients. So Veronica Gray is one of our more junior associates, extensive experience in public law. She's sort of our go-to person on a whole host of regular day-to-day issues. Next slide. The next sort of set of our team are folks that, in a perfect world, you don't need to see them a whole lot. Allison Hernandez is our personnel person. She will come in if there are employment disputes, advice that's required on policies related to employment. Mark Wilson is our labor and employment counsel. To the extent that you are negotiating MOUs with any represented units, that's where he would come in. And then Brian Hamlet is the tort liability litigation person. So those are typically covered disputes by your carrier, but we really like to have an internal person who is aware of any situations that are going to create liability for the city. And next slide. There's me again, same old picture. But Lisa Maxwell is our complex transactions person, primarily real estate easements, other things like that. She really comes in with expertise and can resolve those very quickly. Alan Cohen is code enforcement, to the extent that that's a significant issue. It's a real specialty. We like to have people who do it pretty consistently so that they can know the folks that they're up in front of. Next slide. Denise Pizzano is sort of our planning guru, you know, land use, housing, et cetera. You know, I noticed in just kind of doing a little bit of investigation into the issues that y'all have, you do have a fair number of development projects, and those often involve complex negotiations with developers. And so we like to bring in somebody who's very experienced with that to best represent the city. And then last, Daven Widrow, he's our specialty litigation environmental person. Certainly with water and wastewater, regulatory issues come up all the time. And, you know, I use him daily. You know, just today, I got an email about a settlement with the EPA on some issue for one of my sanitary district clients. But he really has expertise. He worked for the Air Resources Board in San Diego. And so, you know, kind of knows how the regulators work and think. Next slide. So this is just a quick taste of all of our city clients. You can see that they're spread around the state, Southern California, Central California, Northern California. But we really do have a wide range of cities, many sizes, shapes, et cetera. And, you know, as Mark indicated, that expertise really means that it is rare that we see an issue that has not been addressed by someone in our firm before. And that allows us to provide you with efficient and cost-effective service. Next slide. And that is part of the distinction of Burke. I mean, Burke is a nearly 100-year-old firm. It was the first sort of primarily public agency firm in the state. It invented the contract city attorney model, which is what you are utilizing and what we're here to propose today, which is that you don't hire a full-time employee as your city attorney. You hire a contract person who can meet all of your needs more efficiently and, in my view, more economically. We provide the full range of legal advisory, transactional, litigation services. We have 174 attorneys across, I believe, 10 offices, and then 90 management and support staff. Next slide. So Burke Williams generally, we have 10 practice groups. Our primary practice is public, but that crosses over into a lot of other things, labor and employment, code enforcement, environmental. All of these are sort of separate practice groups in the firm. Litigation, I'm actually the chair of the firm's litigation practice group. So in addition to my general counsel work, I do do and really monitor a lot of litigation for our city attorney and for my general counsel clients. We really are a brain trust with decades of experience. A number of, I think it was two years ago, one of our partners was the president of the League of California Cities. We've had other past presidents of the League of California Cities. We really do have a deep, deep bench and deep knowledge of public law. And as a result, we have specialists to meet all of your legal needs. When you represent over 200 government entities, which the firm does, it's hard to stump us. You might be able to stump me, but I can then reach out to the rest of the firm and find the answer. Sometimes at a city, at a council meeting, you just send an email out to the group, and by the time the person needs an answer to the question, you have it in front of you, which is very valuable. Next slide. As I mentioned, we have 10 offices throughout the state. We really do kind of run, and we're not too far north. I think the furthest north we have is Marin. But kind of Marin south, we have a number of offices. And then, next slide. And we have a tremendous amount of public law expertise. These are some of the specific things, and you'll see these kind of track to the people that we've included on the proposal so that you can see their expertise. One that we did not include is public construction. That's actually something that I handle pretty extensively, particularly for my wastewater and water clients. They are building things all the time. And so we don't have a specific person for that because that's a task that I would take on. And I'll turn it back over to Mark to finish out the proposal.
Thank you, Leah. If I can get the next slide, please. So Burke is unique. We do have large firm resources. For example, we have a library team, and our librarians send, every day, they send headlines from the Daily Journal, new cases from the California Supreme Court, Courts of Appeal, and of course, the US Supreme Court. But it has a small firm feel in that we really do tailor our approach to each and every one of our clients. We bring experience and expertise to the table. Value, I do want to pause there in terms of value added, and this is linked to us having so many public agency clients. Again, usually if one person is working on it, multiple clients can benefit from the exact same thing. So we do try to provide cost savings where we can for our public agency clients. And then from there, I'm going to jump into the next slide. So improving your legal services. So starting with communication and integration. The city attorney, of course, works very closely with the city manager, other members of city staff, as well as the council. And so we try to, I want to take direction from the city manager in terms of how often we communicate, whether it's at the weekly staff meeting or something more frequent, things like that. And on the practical advice issue, we do try our best to, you know, provide easy-to-understand legal advice. It's one thing to, you know, read a very dense legal opinion from a lot of really smart judges, but it's something else to translate that into something that, you know, your community can understand. So again, we try to provide practical advice where we can. And also, we want to focus on a long-term relationship with our public agency clients and be invested in the communities that we serve. Yes, I did address some of this in the prior slide, but we do believe that communication is key. So that means providing clear, concise, and understandable advice. And we do want to learn and know what you as a council and your constituents care about. And we will find a way to tailor our approach to match your local preferences. Typically, we can avoid pitfalls with being involved early on and providing advice before something potentially matures into litigation. If it does, that's when I hand things over to Leah. We also provide practical, again, real-world advice. And we know that the law is just one of many relevant factors. Sometimes there's non-monetary issues, policy issues that might be important to the city that go beyond just what the black letter law says. We try to focus on solutions and a path forward. You know, we face so many challenges on a daily basis. So it's one of those things where sometimes we've got to address it and find a way to move on. We do provide risk assessment and cost-benefit analyses to weigh, help weigh decisions that the council might have to make. And finally, the role of the city attorney, it differs from client to client. And that will depend, how we approach this, it will depend mostly on what the city's preference is. So again, we try to tailor and provide a, match the local preference.
And I'll just add one thing there, because I do think it's really important to recognize that the city, we also really take seriously the notion that we are not the policymakers. You all are the policymakers. Our job is to explain the risks and benefits of a particular path of action and then do everything we can to effectuate your objectives as the policymaker. That's sort of a fundamental reality of the city attorney or general counsel role that we take very seriously.
Next slide, please. Okay, so for the city attorney team, there's going to be one point of contact, just so that there's a way to, just a hub of information. So if there's any pending issue, you'd be able to reach out to me and say, hey, what's the status on this one Public Records Act request? I would know where to look for that answer and have, you know, a status update readily available. Also focused attention and the core team really working well together. I got to say that everyone that we've put on this proposal is very responsive. Usually I can get them on the phone within an hour or at least a text message, something like that. So we do work very closely together and we're very responsive. These are collaborative relationships that we've built up with each other as a team. Finally, backup, that means if I fall ill or something like that happens, you have access to Leah as well as the other members of the team. And also flexibility. So again, we'll have to learn more from the city, but it could be something where we could scale up, scale down to meet the city's needs. Okay, I think that should take us to our final slide. Okay, I know we went through a lot of material very quickly. We wanted to save some time for Q and A.
Yes, Mayor Batum.
Yeah, this question either for Mr. Tran or whoever wants to answer. And I'm going to ask for both firms the same questions that way. If we go through and we award the contract, when is the likely time of starting service?
As soon as you'd like us to start.
There's no delay on our end. I mean, you know, we can start as soon as you tell us to go. And, you know, I mean, obviously, the contract needs to be adopted. But, you know, in a lot of instances, we can start providing some assistance even before you sort of take the contract.
No, I was referring, after the contract, if awarded, after it's been signed, when can you officially take over? Because, no.
It would likely be, as soon as you approve the contract, that would be your contract city attorney.
You'd be at the next meeting.
Okay, yeah. And then also, I don't, as you know, currently, the city council meets first and third Tuesday, and the planning commission meets on second Tuesday. If, and we're not sure if it's going to go, but say that we have special meetings, you guys are available? Because sometimes you have a special meeting on a different day, you know, it calls for it, there's, agenda gets so, you know. You have the flexibility to come on another day?
Yes, I do.
And there was also a minor conversation. We're not sure if it's going to change or not. There was an idea brought up by one of the council members to maybe hold our meetings on a different day instead of a Tuesday. We're not sure what's going to change or not change, but you have the flexibility to do that if meeting days change?
Yes, I would be available. Currently, I sort of help my colleagues in the capacity of a deputy city attorney and fixer and broaden when things require my expertise. But I do not currently have any standing meetings that would prevent me from attending your regular council meetings, special council meetings, or if you decided to move your council meetings. We talk about that as well, of course.
Yeah, I understand, but I just wanted to make sure, and I am going to ask the other law firm as well, you know. But I just want to make sure, because usually sometimes, I don't know about how many cities you personally represent or you, but sometimes you have more than one city or one client that you represent, and you may have certain days that are committed to them as well. So I just wanted to make sure that there was flexibility.
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So are you guys based out of Marin or San Francisco?
I'm based in our Marin office.
I am theoretically based in our Oakland office, but I actually live right down the 99 and work out of my home office in a campo. So that's where I spend 90% of my working time.
Okay, yeah, I just had a concern over the travel time, so thank you.
So there were, one of the questions that I had was, actually both of them, the meeting dates, which is, just to make sure there's no conflict of interest in regards to our meeting, normal meeting dates. And just for clarification, so if I remember correctly, there would be some travel time cost? Or can you, can you go more, expand on that in regards to fees, costs?
Yes. So the assigned office would be the Marin office. So I think in the proposal, we've mentioned that we are flexible with the travel arrangement. And I'll say that there's a few ways that different firms do this, right? Some firms do portal program, others will do halftime, others do, you know, any sort of other arrangement. We on our end are flexible, but it would be from the Marin office, which I think today was, was it two hours or something like that?
Okay.
Well, and I'll just, one of the things that we try to do is to make sure that there's some value for the travel time that isn't just travel. You know, I know I travel all over the Bay Area and use my phone as sort of a traveling office to take calls, have conversations, et cetera. I also tend to double up office hours on travel days. So I'll set meetings with staff on, you know, on my board days in order to not sort of double dip or triple dip on travel so that you're only paying for travel time, even though, you know, Mark might be coming out to do office hours to meet with the city manager, then to attend the council meeting. So there's lots of ways that we can do that. And we really are very attentive to trying to be economical in how we spend your money, which is ultimately, and the public's money. It's something I think we all, part of why we work for public entity firms, is because we care about the public and public service, and part of that is being mindful of the money.
Thank you. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I have a couple of questions. So when it comes to flexibility of travel, you just mentioned office hours. Is there a standard procedure that Burke tends to take across the cities that it works with? One day a week, one day every two weeks? What do the provided office hours tend to look like?
It really differs city to city and the demands of what the city needs. You know, when I did work out in the city of Avalon, you know, your travel day, your council day, was the day that you provided office hours because of the Catalina Express going back and forth. And again, we'd have to talk to the city manager about how often we should be on site, if it should be, you know, weekly, council days, things like that. And of course, we can make use of Zoom for meetings that don't fall on days where we have office hours, things like that.
Okay. I have a couple of questions that were specifically requested by a resident, so I want to make sure I ask those. First one is, how much does the firm charge to provide a redacted invoice to a resident who might request one?
So that's sort of a multi-question question. And I'll start by, I treat it as a Public Records Act request. So we'd work with the city clerk's office to process the request. And depending on the question, those records might not be disclosable under law. State law would prevent us. And because there's issues of attorney-client privilege, work products that might be triggered by that. And of course, depending on the complexity of the issue, it could be a one-off issue, right? For example, if there's a question of how, whether somebody reviewed a 10-page contract, how much time did that take versus this multi-year, complex litigation? So shorter answer is the laurally answer of, it depends.
Well, and I'll just supplement the answer, because one of my specialty practices is dealing with Public Records Act requests. I deal with, I have frequently dealt with requests for invoices. A sort of standard practice, which is very inexpensive for the city, is to provide the face page of the invoice, which just sort of sows total amount build, but it doesn't show the itemization of the tasks. If that's not sufficient for the member of the public, sometimes it is. Sometimes they want the itemization, then you sort of run into the issues that Mark referenced, which is you really do have to be careful about what you disclose because the privilege doesn't belong to us, it belongs to you, and we can't waive it. And it can sometimes be costly and time-consuming to go through and redact. But that's something that we would do and honestly have done and do quite frequently in consultation with the city and the city manager.
Right. Next question from resident, I believe it has to do with statute of limitations. So the question was, given the understanding that certain items are redacted because of current litigation, property negotiations, et cetera, at what point in time do current items that are redacted pass from being current to historical, which are subject to historical, which are subject to disclosure per the California Public Records Act?
So there's a...
Are we talking about, at what point does the attorney-client privilege not apply to the items on the invoice? Is that the question?
I think what they're trying to get at is at what point are they able to view? Is there a point where they're able to view records that are currently considered redacted? Is there a point where that statute of limitations expires? I think that's where they were trying to get.
So I think the legal standard is active or recently concluded litigation. Is that defined?
Well, and again, these are, I mean, kudos to the member of the public for sort of identifying these very complex legal questions. The short answer is the attorney-client privilege lives forever. But you all can waive the attorney-client privilege at any time. We would typically recommend that you don't do that. But if there is an invoice that relates to a matter that was resolved four years ago and a member of the public wanted it, it would ultimately be up to the council if they wanted to waive the attorney-client privilege as to the redacted items and then produce it to the public. But the actual attorney-client representative, that privilege, there is no statute of limitations on that privilege.
If I could add something, so I think that'd have to be balanced against the applicable retention policy as well because the city only has to keep it for, you know, so much time under the government code.
Good. Thank you. Next two questions are mine. I'll be very transparent about this. I, from a broad view, we mentioned the $10,000, uh, 10,000 feet altitude earlier. From a broad, high-level view, I view the public sector as a white-collar cartel. I mean, there are corruptions at all levels of government. Not accusing anybody in this room or in any specific agency, but we know the nature of our work. I'm not saying the private sector is much better, but we have more eyeballs than they do certainly. And the reason I bring that up is because we all have access to direct and indirect incentives to take illegal, and/or unethical actions that could benefit ourselves or people of our choosing. For the elected officials on the dais, this can come in the form of campaign donations. It can come in the form of kickbacks from potential developers. Kickbacks can exist on the city staff side as well. And for attorneys, it can be billables, right? You guys have billable hours that you need to meet. And so can the firm please speak to the balance that they find between meeting their billables requirement, but also working in the best interest of the city and making sure that we're being charged appropriately and we're not oversubsidizing your firm?
Sure. So we only, we only do work that we're asked to do. So that's something where we would seek direction from the council and the city manager to say, this is approved work, please review these contracts. Or hey, help us with this particular case. So we don't make or invent our own work. And to address your question, you know, we do have a billable requirement. But if there was any fraudulent billing, there'd be bigger issues like the California False Claims Act and, you know, potential procedures before the state bar. So there's a lot of protections in place to ensure that attorneys don't bill unethically.
And I'll just supplement that answer. I mean, if you do any research on me, you will see that I sort of cut my teeth as a public law lawyer doing presentations on government ethics. It is a big part of my practice. It's why, government ethics and transparency. It is, to me, one of the most important components of a relationship with a public sector client, is that the members of the community trust that you are acting in the best interest of the community. Because once you lose that trust, then everything just goes downhill from there. So I take very seriously, as does every person that works at the firm. And I'll note, I'm an equity partner at the firm, so this is something that is very important to me. I take very seriously maintaining that relationship with all of our clients, having open conversations about bills, making sure that the client understands what's being billed, why it's being billed, and feels that it's fair. And if they don't, then we are very permissive in adjusting bills as necessary. And, you know, to Mark's point, we do the work that we are asked to do or that we need to do in order to protect the city, but we don't make up work. And I'll end with, part of the benefit of a large law firm is no one client is worth enough to jeopardize our relationship in the state, our relationship in the firm, and our professional licenses. So I understand your concern, and I certainly see it from members of the public a lot. But it is something that we really do take deeply, deeply serious and work to develop a relationship of trust with the client and with the community.
Thank you. Last question is for Mark. Why public law?
Why public law? So I was a community organizer before I went to law school. And I just, basic things like, wait, what are my First Amendment rights? Can I go hand out pamphlets, brochures at this shopping center or not? I didn't know. And then sort of that background combined with my family, we had a small Vietnamese restaurant where I grew up in Riverside. And we were just getting hit with a bunch of legal issues that we as a family did not know how to navigate. So those two sort of combined experiences pushed me into law school. And when I was a first-year law student looking for my one L summer position, I ended up working for a judge who worked in public law. And I remember when she said the phrase municipal law, my brain just exploded. I was like, wait, say that again. So you're telling me that there's something I can do that involves government, politics, and the law? And I can, you know, do this for a living? And that's when I caught the bug, and I never got rid of it. So I'm still here.
Thank you guys for your time.
Counsel, any other questions? All right, you're off the hook for now. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And thank you for accommodating us going first. I appreciate that, as I'm about to go into another meeting. Back to him.
Perfect timing, 7:45.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have item number two, presentation by, you gotta help me with them. I don't wanna kill them. Colin Tuono, Highsmith and Watley, PC, Introduction and Proposed Legal Services.
That's pretty close. Well, good evening. I'm Andrew Jared. I'm with the law firm of Colin Tuono, Highsmith, and Watley. This is Mahir Karori, and we're here to explain how we're different. It's very interesting to, normally, these processes are behind closed doors and you don't get to hear what the others have to say. And a lot of what they have said, I can echo. We did not prepare a presentation. I wanted to provide time to you, more time to you, to ask, you've seen our presentation, you've seen our proposal, you've seen our cost proposal. We think it's very competitive, typically is. Again, Colin Tuono, Highsmith, and Watley is a law firm initially based in Los Angeles and now main office is in Grass Valley. We have six offices statewide. I practice out of the Pasadena office. Mahir practices out of the Sacramento office. The Grass Valley office is our corporate headquarters. And that's where Michael Colin Tuono, the founder of our firm, sits. It's a pleasure to allow you to meet me, get to know me, get to know Mahir a little bit, get to know our team, and understand what we're about. And what we're about is providing legal advice that's helpful, understandable, and reasonably priced. We've grown over the years. We started out as a firm breaking off from another one of our municipal law competitors to, partners broke off from there and about, I guess that would be 23 years ago, and have grown now to 34 attorneys, as it states in our proposal, again, with six offices statewide. Actually, 34 is no longer true. We've gained three people in the last month. We merged with what's called the telecom law firm. And this is a law firm that provides legal advice in the Western US for telecommunications law. And it's the foremost firm for telecom issues. Jonathan Kramer is the expert in telecom issues. We represent over 150 agencies with 34, about 37 attorneys. Statewide, we provide service to over 140 agencies. Of that, there's 12 to 14 right now that are general law cities. We also provide service to a number of special districts. I am personally general counsel for the Galita Water District in Santa Barbara. I'm also city attorney for four cities up in Siskiyou County, right at the Oregon border. We're known for being a litigation firm. More than half of our work is litigation. And that's how we primarily are employed by these 150-plus cities. Currently, we're serving as litigation counsel for the largest cities in the US, well, in the US, California, city of LA, San Francisco, San Diego. Just today, we got word that we won a tax case for city of San Francisco, city and county of San Francisco, they like to be called. We also represent the smallest of clients. And one of my clients up in Siskiyou County has a population of, drumroll, 692 people. And so we run the whole gamut. And what I pride myself in, again, is providing that legal service that's personalized and tailored to what you need and provides you a cost savings. And what I try to achieve is a cost savings over whoever I replace. And thus far, that's been the case when I took over dealing with things with the city of Pomona. From my own firm, started taking things over and was able to reduce costs in a certain way. When I, again, took over again in my own firm in the city of Chico, and then when I brought Chico to my new firm, Colin Tuono, Highsmith, and Watley, and was able to achieve cost savings each time. And I'm sure that the ways that we can work with the city manager, work with you, to achieve a cost savings here. The other 50% of our firm is municipal and transactional law. That's what I primarily specialize in, even though I started out as a litigator for four years before doing, switching to municipal law now 20 years ago. I was a litigator for four years. This is a good part of your question, why municipal law? Well, I saw that the law was changing in litigation that I was doing, construction defect, which is my family's background. What I did before going to law school was as an electrician. I saw that field slowly dying a slow death. But cities will be here forever. So why am I here? I'm here because I have the love of this podium and this temple of democracy. So I'll jump ahead to your question and answer this, but this is a passion of mine. And I've gotta get it out of my system, because if I wait for your question, I'll start to tear up with it. I'm very emotional about what you do on Tuesday nights, what we do every day, and working for people and working for democracy. There I go. We provide advice both in person. And one of the benefits, I guess, of COVID has been the virtual attention that we can give clients virtually through Zoom meetings. So I start my Monday mornings with standing meetings with my city managers, kicking off the week with, what are we doing this week? What are the goals? What do you need from me? And that's how we start. It's not formally an executive team meeting, but it's the way we kick, I kick off with most of my clients, is to start it with, what are your goals for me this week? Again, we're excited to be over your city. Why don't I allow Mahir to introduce himself? And what he's doing is one of our younger attorneys. But in the short time he's been with us, he's got a lot of experience and grew up not in the Central Valley, but nearby. And Mahir, I want you to tell what you're interested in these days.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to meet you all and it's a pleasure to be speaking to you all today. My name is Mahir, and I'm an associate with Colin Tuono, Highsmith, and Watley. I work in the Sacramento office. Some areas of expertise and interest of mine are environmental law, land use, and housing. For example, some projects that I've worked on recently, including drafting ordinances for topics such as SB 9, which deals with urban lot splits and duplexes, also accessory dwelling unit ordinances. As you know, housing has become a really localized issue in the past few years. And when we draft ordinances to allow more development and more affordable housing, we wanna make sure that developers are complying with local zoning policies and standards. Some other areas of interest of mine include development impact fees, SEQA, and energy law. And as Andrew mentioned, I grew up in Pleasanton, California, which is kind of on the border of the Central Valley and Bay Area. And yeah, I'm really excited to be here speaking with you all tonight. Thank you.
So kind of closing out here, the role of the city attorney, I think, is a very important idea to get across between the city attorney and the council. And while it might change from city to city, my core belief is that we work for the city council. You hire me, I work for you. But that means I work with the man to your left on a daily basis to achieve your goals. So while we work for you, we have to work with the city manager. We have to work with staff, work very closely with city clerks on a daily basis. But it's important that you realize I work for you, period. We're not wed to a system of one point of contact, although I like to be involved in nearly everything that goes on. While I never played basketball, even at a competitive level, at high school level, I'm a ball hog, and I like to be involved. I like to be where the action is. And I'll admit, I am the roadblock on a number of projects. But when you, when your staff is working on a project, it's not going to be you have to go through me to get to them. It's going to be that you have the ability to achieve your goals in or by working with our staff. I don't know if we wanna go through the same questions. I jotted some of them down. How do you wanna achieve that?
So what I would like to have is each counsel that, please ask the same questions.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Jared?
Sir.
Okay, you were proposing that you will serve as the lead counsel for, but also, when I was looking at here, it said on page 37 that you currently serve first and third Tuesdays at another city.
Yeah, I'm a busy guy.
So, but as you know, we hold our meetings on first and third Tuesdays.
I do know that, and I was aware of that when I applied here. A choice needs to be made, and there's a couple of ways to achieve that. You've also mentioned about moving your meetings. But when I applied here, I know that if hired here, it's a different rate here. And I would need to make that choice to come here. We would need to work that out and clear that up.
So you may not be the attorney?
No, quite the opposite. I would not, either we would need to make arrangements in the other city or for someone else to be dealing with that city and may not be working there, or that city moved to another date. You, it's awkward with these RFP processes. As you alluded to, there is a question of maybe you moving your date. I'm open to that as well. I do have cities that have meetings on Mondays, but they're occasional. And I frankly don't attend all of those. And that's another thing, with some of those cities that are on that list, there's three cities on that list where I have, yeah, there's two cities on the list where I've never appeared at a city council meeting and yet been their city attorney and appeared remotely only when needed. And there's one where I've attended one city council meeting in person, again, with remote attendance.
Okay, and then same questions as I asked the other firm, because we wanna make sure, if chosen, when is the likelihood of you or the firm taking over?
Yeah, as was stated and as your counsel alluded to, the way these typically happen, if a decision is made, it's typically immediate. And then there's usually a period of time where we need to work things out to clear dates or whatever that is. If we do need to provide that kind of a notice somewhere else, it could be up to 30 days. But typically, it's seamless, it's next-day type of stuff.
Yeah, I understand. And I know that once we're chosen and the contract is signed, you're the, the firm that we choose is the city attorney, affirmative. But like you said, if you have to move things around, we're just kind of curious, you know, if we said, hey, the start date is 30 days, and I'm using hypothetical, will the 30 days be available? Is somebody available to start? Is somebody available to start on that meeting on that?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, and then, okay, thank you very much. Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead. Mr. Mayor, so again, where are you guys based out of?
Yeah, so I'm based out of Pasadena, and driving up here today, it was four-and-a-half-hour drive. Mihir is based out of Sacramento office, I think that was about a two-hour drive. And we have other attorneys that are on this side of Sacramento, and so it varies like that. But to answer your question directly, I'm based out of the Pasadena office. I typically work from home, and again, as, you know, I've been servicing clients in Northern California remotely since 2012, and that was the City of Chico, the City of Yountville, two years now with these clients in Siskiyou County, and so the distance, particularly now with Zoom and that technology, it really shrinks the distance.
Thank you. So I think I do want to expand, and just to be clear on his question, which was a question that I asked, well, that was asked before. So the travel time from Pasadena would be the, would be the travel time that will be billed to come to attend meetings?
Yeah, so we were very clear in our proposal, and this is the way that I structure my agreements with all my clients, is it's one half, part of the portal. And some clients are able to pay for other travel expenses, hotel and airfare. In your proposal, I don't believe I have put that in here. So what I'm giving you is a proposal to travel you, or to charge you for one half of the time it takes to get here.
Yeah, I just want to clarify that for the record.
Yeah.
Thank you. Counsel, were there other questions?
You answered one of them already, thank you for that. I would like to task one of the other questions that I asked.
Sure.
Mr. Tran, when it comes to the billable situation, how does the firm manage their billable requirement and balance that with the city's needs?
Well, our lead managing partner, Michael Colentuno, was the president of the California State Bar. He holds ethics in the highest regard, and we itemize every task we do on every bill, and show you, and we gave you an example of our bills. We itemize them by one-tenth of an hour, and show you exactly what we're doing. We submit those to the city manager, often city managers review that, and this kind of, I guess, tension that you're proposing between my need for billable hours and then doing more work for you, as the attorneys from Burke said, we take direction from you on what services you need. I have no problems making my hours, I'm a very busy guy, we've got plenty of work. It actually works in the reverse typically. We have often too much work to do, and actually, it ends up being staff and, when we work with staff to really triage, what work do you need done this month so that your budget is addressed? Oftentimes, when we come on, it's, you know, here, do all of this work, and we have to remind folks, well, you know, you brought us on either to save costs or to stay within a budget, we've got to keep that in mind. So that's, that tension you're talking about, it's very real, but I hope that you can trust, we build this trust and this rapport, and with any type of sales, you have to know, like, and trust the person, and then you buy the product. I hope we've, you know, you know us a little bit, I hope you like us, and I hope we can earn your trust and keep your trust.
Definitely, thank you. I do need to ask you one quick question that I'm not going to ask Mark, because it's a Pasadena question. Have you ever been to a live Rose Bowl game?
Live, I did. I went to the two thousand and one, it was, yeah, Texas versus, I think, Wisconsin or Michigan or something like that, and it was a great time, yeah.
Thank you guys for your time.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you very much. Those were, I think, were all the questions that we had, unless you have anything else to add?
I saw, heard some other questions. Did you want me to answer the other questions that I jotted down?
If we missed anything, yes, go ahead.
All right, so you were asking, I think you, we traveled, the travel costs, there was a question about office hours. We, yeah, we work with what the office hours are. We do typically, you know, match those office hours with a time we are here, but often, like I was saying, we achieve office hours during, a set time during the week, either via Zoom or by conference call. I also am a huge fan of cell phones. A lot of people don't use cell phone, we all have a cell phone, but people don't use the self, they don't use the talky part of the cell phone. I'll, you know, I use this all the time. So I give city council members my cell phone number, city manager my cell phone number, and I encourage people to call me any time of the day. I did have a police officer call me once at three a.m. for an item, and I took the call, because that was his shift, I needed to bend to your schedule and achieve what goals you have. It was office hours. You had a question about redaction of invoices. I've dealt with that issue, and we had a, the city of South Pasadena had that issue a lot. There was a council, or there was a person in the public who wanted to know and criticize, and as counsel from Burke said, as I saw your current city attorney nodding, bills are work product, bills are attorney-client privilege. Yeah, you can waive that. We often discourage it, but there are times, of course, when it's appropriate to disclose the entire bill unredacted at times. There could be situations where that would be warranted. Where it's specifically in your, completely against your interest is even when ongoing litigation is happening, we strongly encourage that you take measures to not let your opponent know how much you are spending in that current litigation, specifically month-to-month. Now, overall, we can't, but the case law does allow for you to prevent that from happening. But I think what you'll find is that our billing and our, the amounts we bill, the invoices, as one of the attorneys mentioned, the cover sheets would be specific enough to address the issues of how much is being spent in community development, how much is being spent on public works, et cetera. I think it's, you know, what was important is that the public also have that trust, and they have a right to know how much is being spent on legal fees, they just don't have a right to know to the extent, to your detriment as a city council. There was a question, again, I think there was one other point I wanted to make with your question regarding the billables and steering of work and stuff like that. My goal is to keep you out of litigation, and so we're not one of these firms that views ourselves as a litigation firm in order to get here and hold back on, or really promote an approach that is pro-litigation. We fully understand if that's the tactic you want to take, and there are times to fight, but it's your decision as a council to determine when that is, and you deserve to be able to make that decision. I think that about sums it up. If there are any other questions, happy to answer them.
All right.
Thank you.
Anything else?
All right.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. All right, it's one last thing. Our cost proposal does show an hourly rate, and it shows two versions of that. One version is a flat hourly rate. We do request a certain amount of hours be set in order to reserve this Tuesday night. If you do move that to a different night, we could change that to a lower. We could also work towards a fixed fee that's mentioned in here, and that would take a little more negotiation, and to determine what it is you currently are spending, and number, more important than spending, how many hours are being spent, what is going to be required of us. We can then budget and have a conversation and negotiation to set a fixed fee monthly for those general services, and we're happy to do so. Thank you all.
All right, thank you. All right, so, and then, once again, we're going to be discussing this matter in closed session, after the, our regular session, so, and then we'll be just reporting out then. I don't know if, what the report will be, but I'm sure you already know that. All right. Next, we have item number three, presentation by Doug McAllister, Vice President, External Affairs, Frontier, Frontier Gigabit Fiber and Livingston. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. I spent about thirteen years on your side of the dais as mayor of Marietta, and you are bringing back a lot of memories tonight, budgets and hiring city attorneys and such. It's like, I remember those days, but those were, I ended in two thousand and twelve, so it's all yours. My name is Doug McAllister, I'm the Vice President of Frontier Communications. My goal is to have a very quick presentation. Once again, I've sat there through presentations, and I know you're busy, you've been, was, I think, since five-thirty tonight, and you've got a ways to go yet, so I'm going to try to be as fast as possible. So let's just jump right into it. The deck, I'm going to try to keep to five, eight minutes, and then we can, if you have any questions, fine, if not, I'm done early. So if we go to the next slide, please. What we're talking about tonight is fiber optic. It is not fiber plus copper, it's pure fiber optic from the side of the house to the side of our wire center. It is, it's a game changer, it's going to provide for massive speeds, and we're going to talk about that here in a minute. But let's move on to the next slide, please. This is a quote from me, not the company, but it is, it's my response to the company coming to find me. They came and recruited me about three years ago and created the position I now hold. I am the face of Frontier for all of California, for all electeds, and all senior city and county officials. The purpose for this was because they figured out they had to do business better. This fiber optic build is nationwide, but in California, it is massive, millions of homes to be passed, and there's no way they could make those numbers, at least they didn't think so. And so that's why they decided to bring me on to help work with the cities and counties. I don't work with the state or the feds anymore, I'm trying to avoid that. I work with cities and counties to see to it that we are not the square peg to try to fit into the round hole, quite the opposite there. So this is my quote, if we're going to do something bigger than we've ever have, then we better do business better than we ever have, and so that's part of why I'm even here tonight, to introduce myself to you. Next slide, please. Basically, this is the process or the flow of our build, and I'm going to talk about the build in a little more detail here in a second, but prior, you know, before we ever get started on the build, we're always trying to make sure we've got everything or all the ducks in a row with the USA markings, we know where the utilities are, and so forth and so on, and for sure make sure that the neighbors are alerted. A lot of the ways they do that, for instance, is door hangers. My problem with door hangers is that I go to my front door for only two reasons. I drive into the garage, it's, I lead through the garage. I go to the front door, one is to harvest door hangers. I don't look at them, especially during election season, I just don't look at door hangers, I pull them off and throw them away. The, so therefore, if somebody notified me of something, I am effectively not notified. The only other reason I go to my front door is my wife's Amazon purchases, but that's a whole nother discussion. The bottom line is, is that it's, in my view, if someone has gone and harvested door hangers off their door that said, we're going to be here in two days, they didn't get notified. So if you get called about that or something, that's why I exist. I need to take that off your table and put it on mine. The second step there is we move with your staff and work with permits, get the groundwork going, everything else for, to get ready for construction, and then we affect the construction. Most times, it's going to be aerial, sometimes it's buried, it just depends on the build. But this one right here, I'm real concerned about for after construction. One of the things I've been trying to clean up in California is making sure that when our contractors do work in your city, they finish the work they started, meaning that it's a temporary patch, needs to become a permanent patch, a, if there's a sidewalk panel pulled out, it needs to be replaced, and all those things need to happen, and they need to do the job the way we expect them to do it, meaning little things like frontier decals on the side of their vehicles, wearing some sort of identification that says that they're with us as opposed to not. Little things like that, that sometimes you might hear about if they don't do it. Once again, don't even take the second breath. Your city manager has all my contact information, and so I exist to see to it that doesn't happen to you in the city. So I guess, before I go any further, the bottom line here is, one of the, the main reason I'm here is to introduce myself to you. I work for you. When Frontier came to get me and asked me to come and work for them to try to affect this and move things forward, I said, sure, under two conditions. One is you will pay me, number one, not you, they, and, but number two, they need to understand that I work for you, not them. And they had a issue with that, asking officially, why? Why would we pay you, but you don't work for us? And my response basically was, is that I don't, I didn't mean to, I'm not to speak un, not nicely about the contractors or the employees, everything else, but I have learned over my thirty-plus years of working in that space with business and government, that my clients don't always tell me the truth. They're going to give me the best version of their side of the story, and I have found, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, the city's stupid, they don't know what they're doing, they're not being very yada, yada, yada. I'll get back to you. City manager, what's the rest of the story? I always want to know what the rest of the story is, ninety-nine times out of a hundred, it's not the city that's the issue, it's sometimes it's our contractors. And so, my job is to make sure that our contractors and our employees and such are not square pegs in the round holes, but rounds pegs in the round holes. And so, in essence, what that means is you tell me to jump, and I will say, how high? And that's the bottom line for that. So that's part of the after construction. Please do not ever apologize to me for calling me. If you have a constituent, like they used to me, do me, when I walked into church or into the school or to an event, whatever else, and I get lambasted for something I don't even know what they're talking about, I didn't enjoy that. I don't know about you guys, maybe you do, but I did not enjoy that experience, especially when I did not know who to ask and to get this thing resolved. At the first hand, don't, not even the second breath, please let me handle it. Just let me know about it, and I will take care of it. Typically, I have a whole team that works for me, that is my internal response team, so that when you escalate to me, I escalate to them, and whatever they escalate that came from me goes to the top of the pile. So it's my job to make sure that I give you cover and give you the answers you need, so you don't have to do, experience what we electeds have always had to experience out there in the public. Next slide. Real quickly, just the top three bullet points. Once again, this is a hundred percent fiber, this is not fiber and copper, that's basically DSL. This is a hundred percent copper from the side of our wire center to the side of the house. It gives you a much stronger connection. I read a study that said that the average household has twenty-two devices in their home, and I didn't believe it. And so I went home, and I, I counted the number of devices that we have at my house, and so it's me, it's my wife, and my cat. And my cat doesn't use, she does nothing, but my wife and I had thirteen devices between us in our home. I have, you can see the different speeds that Frontier's offering here, I have five-hundred over five-hundred and such, and that runs those sorting devices, there are no choke points, there's no, it's not like DSL, that the more folks that get on it, slower it goes. It is five-hundred up and five-hundred down, and you can see here, the excess that we have, we offer up to, at the house, up to six gigs up and down at those homes. So what that does, and I will tell you this from my own experience, Marietta, when we first moved in and added FiOS back in two thousand and four, two thousand and five, we went from a bedroom community to a biotech community because we had a very robust broadband backbone. That is, from this point of view, you don't have to use the word frontier, but you let the businesses know they're trying to recruit, that you have this kind of capacity, that goes to the houses, and even more, even more gigs can go to the businesses. It is a great economic development tool. Next slide, please. This is just a graphic, says from the side of the wire center to a hub. The hubs are typically placed outside residence, residential neighborhoods, moves into, inside the neighborhoods, which are these terminals, and then from there to the side of the house, and from there into the router in the house. It is fiber from the beginning to the end, and that's why we're able to offer these incredible speeds. When they came to me in Marietta in two thousand and three, two thousand and four, they were offering fifty megs up and down, and now we're talking seven gigs, so things have improved. Next slide, please. This is where, you know, the polygon there in the pink is basically, I think it's pretty accurate, your city limits and such. You'll see the orange lines are our existing fiber that we have, most of those residents have fiber plus copper, it's the old version, and so they have a hundred over a hundred, which is still better than we had in Marietta when they first started, but we're wanting to upgrade that. So we've got those areas, plus what you see in the blue is the new fiber So we've got those areas, plus what you see in the blue are is the new fiber bill that we're doing this year, and that's up to seven, seven gigs up and down at the houses. It's about right now for this for two twenty twenty-five, the plan is to do almost a thousand homes here in the area. It's going to take four to six months to do it. Most of it's going to be either in in aerial or in existing conduit, but there are some areas that involve some boring and trenching, and we work with your staff to make sure we make we do that in such a way that it's that it does not impact people who are notified and roads are not messed up. The TBD are the new builds that don't are not included in the twenty twenty-five, and that that could be twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven. It depends. Part of that to to be determined situation has to do with the fact that Verizon is is attempting to acquire Frontier back. They Frontier bought Verizon some time ago, about ten, fifteen years ago, and now Verizon's come back to acquire the Frontier back. And so which is a good thing for you, deeper pockets and so forth. But they they'll have more to say about exactly when those two TBDs happen. It's my guess that happens sooner or not later as a result of that change. Next slide. This slide I want to do quick. You see the prices up there for everything from fiber two hundred to fiber seven gig. These are the current prices because there's some specials going on. And if we can move to the next slide, because that feels like a commercial, and I want to get off of it. So what I want reason I wanted to say, put that up there is is that one of the virtues of this that your folks are going to going to enjoy is that it's very affordable. We are not including in these packages your cable, where it's basically you buy six, six thousand channels and you watch six. We're not doing that. So the prices where you pay for your cable package, many times two hundred plus dollars a month. I stream. Most folks are choosing to stream what they want to watch. And when you have that much capacity, five hundred over five hundred a gig over a gig, two gigs, five gigs, seven gigs, you can stream anything you want to do there, and it's very, very no, you don't have the issues with the buffering or anything else like that. And so I my my cable bill went from between two and three hundred dollars about to under a hundred dollars, and I watch everything I want to watch. And so it becomes very, very attractive to folks. It also, once again, makes it very, very attractive. Businesses are looking to locate in certain areas. They know that especially if they have remote folks, since COVID's become more of a big deal, that they can work from home and usually have a more robust pipeline for for Internet than than they have at work. So I don't know how long that was, but that's the slide. Any questions at this point?
Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Can we get back to the commercial, please?
Back to the commercial? Dang, okay.
The question I have is, you know, those are pretty fair prices. I don't know about seven gig is I don't know who's going to use seven gigs at one time, not not residents, business perhaps, but not residents. Now, are those going to be introductory or they going to be like permanent? Are they like sign up and next six months later, you're gonna?
I I don't know what Verizon's going to do, but I will tell you that these prices, they have their their list, if you will, the list price, but they never charge that. It's always some special going on. These are resulting from specials. So it's going to be generally in this area. The fact that they're not offering cable in the process of this, that's what always fluctuates way to the deals. When you start out with this price to get for the first year or two, and then all of a sudden, the price goes through this, that's the has to capture what it was really costing to provide that. We don't have that issue. So these will be in these general areas. I don't expect it to go up very much.
Yeah, are there going to be data caps?
Pardon?
Data caps?
No, oh, no, not at all.
No data caps?
No speed, they're not going to throttle your speeds or anything else.
Yeah, this may be now, I know that I saw that map earlier, that you have a nice big area, but are you only going to do it to business and residents? Or because one of the things, I'm not sure how ours is set up. I'll have to get with Public Works, but we do have facilities, you know, like our wastewater and some of our pumps and all that. You know, there's nothing like having them on a closed circuit, you know, you don't if you because I'm not sure exactly how they're connected, but are those options available for the city?
Absolutely. What what I'm here primarily talking about is what we call FTTH, the fiber to the home, which is up to the seven gigs. That doesn't that doesn't even include the business side or the municipal side, and that is a whole another discussion that we have. I mean, we have businesses, they businesses typically, especially larger businesses, are going to need bigger packages, like up to a hundred gigs. And we go at ten, ten gigs each for that. And it's it's because they have IP dresses and everything else going on. And so and basically, if you know of a business or or the city or thing else is looking to look into this, if it comes to your attention, if if does come to your attention, they can go through the normal processes. Please don't put my phone number on the website, okay? Just speaking. But if it comes to your attention, you just connect them with me, and I'll take care of it.
Yeah, then another question is, I know that you now you said there are homes in Livingston already on fiber?
Yes.
Full fiber from?
Can we go back to the map? Can we go back to that map?
Yeah, you said that blue, some folks are already on?
The ones in the yellow, according to what my engineer is telling me, is that it's on fiber from previous builds, but their speeds are up to a hundred over a hundred meg.
Yeah, so are they also going to get an upgrade or are they are they full fiber?
That's what we're working on to enhance. We are the phone company, basically. And so wherever our footprint is, we want to enhance that network. And so my right now, that's probably part of the to be determined, but that's part of what we're trying to upgrade for folks to get them the opportunity to have the faster speeds.
Now, it would go from your facility here, that's where all your fiber terminated here, and then you have equipment here?
Yes.
Do you have equipment here already?
Yeah.
Just to I don't know if I should ask, but doesn't matter. Do you I'm not sure how the traffic is directed, but where do you where do you trunk into from here? Where do you go to from here?
From here? I don't know that we go anywhere else. I mean, probably to the county areas, to the different wires.
No, 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 I mean, the fiber has to go up to somewhere else. It has to from Livingston is going to go somewhere to a switch in Santa Clara or equipment somewhere. Do you know where it goes?
Yeah, that I have no clue.
Because I'll be interested to know what the latency is from here to there, you know?
Yeah, well, if it's fiber and our fiber network, it is pure. It's going to it's not going to it's not going to degrade the speeds whatsoever.
Yeah, just because it says fiber, you know, it could be connected differently on the other end. I don't know how it is, you know?
Yeah, it's cool.
Okay, well.
I'm with you on the seven gigs. I have no clue what people can do with that, but people are buying it.
And Anthony, somebody that on the upper left hand, what is that facility? You know, like on the bottom, it says Carlos Vera, but if you go straight up, huh? So that's that's the that's not the wastewater plant, is it? Huh? But what is that facility? I was trying to figure out. So so you will run fiber to the wastewater facility? Okay, that's what I was trying to?
Yeah, that that is that's one of the questions you would ask me, and I would I would have people smarter than the answer for you.
Yeah, because I'm very, very interested, you know, working with Public Works, city manager, everybody, try to get all of our facilities together, and that means?
That's very common.
You know, and in fact, that means of getting dark fiber just so I just we need to get away from this day and age with terrorists and hackers and all that. You got to get them on a closed circuit as quickly as you can, you know? That's why I was asking that question.
Okay, I can I'll see what I can find out. Typically, what I do is identify your account manager. I make sure the city manager, account manager connect, and the city manager will direct the account manager who to talk to, and we'll get the get that those answers for you.
And now you have applied for the permits, and you're getting ready to start?
I don't know where we are.
Where where are they, Jose? I thought they were going to be done in June.
We're so excited.
With my understanding, you were going to be done in June.
Yeah.
Did I misunderstand that?
No, 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 they're not going to be done by June. We we actually, if you might recall, we basically Doug and his team met with our team to kind of outline how all this was going to play out, where and how we can best work together. But as far as the the actual permitting itself, we are we're moving, it shouldn't be pretty pretty easy, and so we're we're working on that right now. But in terms of a timeframe, when all the permits will be done, we'll be working together to see, you know, as they start coming in.
And to be clear, this is one of the things I'm talking about, and Jose and I have spoken about this, is that square peg and round hole. Typically, a utility or others will come to the city and say, here's what we want done. You you adjust to us. And what I'm training my folks to do is to come to the city and say, you tell us what you need, and we'll find a way to do it. The find what I call find a way to yes. And so that tends to speed permitting up quicker and such. I have to do date, I have had no calls from any of my directors about permit issues here, and that usually means there's not an issue. And so your staff is doing their doing their job, and hopefully, my my team's doing theirs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I have a question too, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. McAllister, where the blue line is, that's where you're putting in the seven gig fibers? All right. I see a bunch of streets, but if you look down in the bottom left corner, there's a blue line, which I'm assuming is going down peach, right where the TBD is right underneath that. Now, if your house is already fiber optic, and I'm within a hundred feet of that, does that mean my house can get hooked quicker?
Okay, what you're looking at are are what we call the feeder lines, I believe. So there are distribution lines that come off of that. And there was the picture I showed where it's the wire center to the hub. These are what goes to the hubs. And then from the hubs are that goes into the terminals, and those are the ones in front of your house. And so the answer is yes. Does it it does us no good to just go to the neighborhood and then not be able to connect to the homes? And so if you're in that area there, there's going to be feeder lines that are going to I mean, distribution lines will be going up into those homes, and you should be able to typically what happens, in your case, you just call me, I'll find out. But anybody can go on to through the process of this build on to the website, frontier.com, and put their address in, and it'll begin to tell them when they are fiber ready at that point, and they can and at that point, then they can make the order. And then that order, then that's when we go from the terminal to the side of the house at that point. We don't do that until they ask for ask us to do so.
Okay, but that answers my question, because the house was built for fiber optic, and then they upgraded it once. So that's why I was just trying to see if there's a possibility now of another upgrade for a hundred dollars a month if I ever thought I'd need that.
Well, you have you have my my contact information, and so don't don't have to wonder. Just reach out to me, and I'll find out.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Couple of questions and comments. Mr. McAllister, thanks for being here and presenting to us. I'm a former Frontier customer. We switched over to Spectrum a few years back because we were having issues. So this is exciting to see. And it looks like your rates might be cheaper than Spectrum, so we might be switching back. I am curious to know, when did this process start for you all? Because you've been in the city for a long time, but when did specifically the ideas for this investment and then making the decision to come in? How long has that been on your radar, and when did you guys decide to go through with it?
I am tempted to answer that by saying I was born at a very early age. This started, in essence, I mean, this is the continuation. It used to be Pac Bell, then moved into Verizon, then became Frontier. Verizon actually started this thing called FiOS back in the early, well, two thousand four area era. Marietta is one of the first cities in the nation to have FiOS at that point. They continued that. Frontier then purchased that, and then about four, three or four years ago, they they jumped both feet into bringing back going into fiber. They Frontier has problems that landed them in bankruptcy. And so coming out of bankruptcy, they moved in, and one of the things they were doing to come out of bankruptcy and become profitable was was moving back into the fiber optic business. And so about four years ago, they started doing this. But the reason you see some of these lines is some of this stuff Verizon did many years ago. And so we're just now coming back around to upgrade at this point with a basically it's FiOS on steroids.
Right. But when did this specific, like the idea for this project coming into the city to upgrade fiber optics, when did you guys decide you were going to go through with what you're presenting now?
I don't know. We we basically, I hope I'm answering your question. We basically plan each year, so this is like twenty twenty-five, and I'm guessing that basically they they did this, made this decision in twenty twenty-four to add your city to the list of cities for us to to do. And then right now, we haven't even haven't begun to work on twenty twenty-six plans because we wait and do that towards the end of the year to see where we stand. And so this specific city, probably around twenty twenty-four is when the decision was made and such. I have I get a list of cities in the first part of each year and counties. That's who I deal with. And so I wanted to meet with city managers and county CEOs and all the electeds who will meet with me and such. And I I go meet with the new ones we're going to work with. And this year, I have eighty on the list, and I'm trying to get through that before I die. But this was the first year your city was on my list, and that's why I'm here now.
Right.
So what I'd like to do is add a little bit and share with Mr. Upl. So this is a it's a it's a complex answer, but the city has been involved, and me, myself have been involved in this line of work, probably for twenty-something years. And that all started with the merger of the AT&amp;T and SBC Global, which then created the California Emerging Technology Fund. And so as part of the CETF and working with Frontier to upgrade and look for, you know, higher speeds and bandwidth, we were talking about, you know, dark fiber, especially because along this ninety-nine corridor, there's access, but it runs by us, but we were not able to access it. And then we were working with CETF, which then provided a grant for twenty-five thousand dollars to look at, you know, broadband deployment and looking for preferred alternatives, which then dovetailed into, you know, the governor, you know, passing a bill and and digital equity and stuff, and our continuous communication through all the service providers, not, you know, T-Mobile, Verizon, AT&amp;T, all these different ones. And and one of the first that we talked to back in the twenty twenty-twelve, I believe, was AT&amp;T. But they their platform and their investment, they were not interested at that time. And and so we kept working with the other service providers and Sunny McPeak in the California Emerging Technology Fund folks and the San Wickeen Broadband Consortium Group have we have continuously worked on, you know, making sure that these type of investments continue to take place in the Central Valley. And so we're very, very, you know, happy that, you know, AT&amp;T, I mean, that SBC, SBC Global and Verizon came together and, you know, we're we're going to reap the benefit.
And I should you mentioned the word investment. I I want to make clear, there's a lot of government money out there now in form of grants and and things for for broadband use and everything else. I want to make very clear that we're not using any of that for this. This is private investment. We're a company with investors who do not like for us to lose money. And so we're we're investing millions of dollars of private money into your community. Now, it's not because we're altruistic, it's because we want to make money, and we believe we will. But I just don't want anybody to worry about this, what we're using. That money that for the grants and things, which we will take advantage of, but it's for middle mile and last mile. It's for those areas where it does not pencil for a private company that has to make a profit, has has competitors and so forth, won't pencil for them to do that. That's what that grant money's for. We're not using that for this. This is this is private money from from Frontier.
Right. And Mr. Mayor, thanks for the context as well. I mean, I think everybody's really excited about this. Competition is good. Spectrum's going to have to get their game together as soon as this is online, right? Which I'm personally excited about, because my customer service experiences haven't been great over the last couple of years. So again, thanks for the time coming out here, presenting this to us. Very excited for this. I know our residents are going to be really excited about this. Like, there's a lot of folks that complain about the internet speeds. And now they'll likely be able to purchase more than they could ever need. So thank you for your time.
Frontier makes it very important. They want to make it very clear, first of all, respect. I know that sounds like blowing smoke, but they want to make sure that the company basically is showing respect to you, which is why they fly me all over the state. Left early this morning on a plane to get up here for this, and they don't have to do that. But they're very, very focused on making sure that you understand that we're trying to do business better than we ever have, and that's why I'm here tonight. Yes, sir? Okay.
So I do want to say thank you, and I do appreciate you making a couple trips out here to the city of Livingston. And I know that you were, you really wanted to be here, you know, because we had some issues with coordinating dates and times and stuff like that. I'm glad that we, you, everybody was able to make it happen. And now you're here again to be able to present. And, you know, for a long time, just from personal experience, Frontier was never an option for me because of all the complaints from, you know, customers in the city. And I know that every now and then, thankfully not often, we have some issues here. I know that in the past, when we were trying, when we were going through COVID, trying to get on Zoom and all of that, we had a lot of issues. And I'm glad to see, you know, the investment in this community, and I think it's well-deserved. And it's good for customers to be able to have options, additional options. And so I just want to say thank you for making the time.
We need to earn everyone's business and such, but it's, it is, it's a pleasure to be here for this. But I will, I remain available to you. The customer service experience is weird, because most of the time it goes well. But when it doesn't, oh, my gosh. And when you get an oh, my gosh in your desk, you put it on mine. I will take care of it.
Yeah, I know. I have nothing to do with Frontier, and sometimes I used to get messages about, you know, to do something about Frontier, and I'm like, well, let's see what we can do. But, you know, it's very limited to what we can do, but anyway, so.
I'm here for us to do better.
All right, thank you.
Thank you all, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for being here. All right, next we have, I know Mr. Pacheco texted me earlier that he was not going to be able to be here because he had another, a conflict of another, to be at another event. Next, we have Conflict of Interest Declaration. This is the opportunity for council to declare any conflict of interest. Members, if applicable, members of the city council will declare an actual or apparent conflict of interest before discussions or decisions about any matters in which they are, or anyone with whom they have a close personal relationship could directly or indirectly benefit, or where such a benefit could be perceived. Seeing none, or hearing none, moving forward, Consent Agenda. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine or non-controversial and will be enacted by one vote unless separate action is requested by a member of the public, the city manager, or city council member. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the public, city council, or city manager request that specific items be removed. Public comment on consent agenda items should be limited to three minutes per person, regardless of the number of items contained within the consent agenda. So we do have item number four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11. Under Consent Calendar, council, are there any questions on any specific items?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I will second it.
All right, so at this time, I will go for public comment before we move forward. Is there any public comment on the consent agenda? Anyone on the phone? Hearing none, coming back to the chamber. Anyone in the chamber? Any questions? Seeing none, closing the public comment at 8:42. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Upal?
Merry Christmas, Chief, yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Summer?
Yes.
Mayor Moran?
Yes.
Motion passes by vote of 5-0.
Thank you. Next, we have Public Hearing, item number 12, Consideration of Resolution Establishing the City Public Hearing Procedures Required by Assembly Bill 2561. Government Code 3502.3 Conduct a Public Hearing and Receive and File of the City of Livingston AB 2561. Vacancy Rates Public Hearing Presentation. Staff Recommendation to Approve Resolution.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council, yes, this is a pretty straightforward item. This particular item is basically focused around city workforce vacancy. And if I remember correctly, it was September of 2024 when this particular bill was signed into law by the governor. And so it basically allows, you know, unions or recognized employer organizations to provide, you know, some type of input, you know, as it relates to the actual vacancies and recruitment and retention efforts by the city. And we currently have about 62 employees that are represented by five different bargaining groups. And so this requires, again, a public hearing. And we're requesting that council adopt, you know, the attached resolution that establishes the procedures required for AB 2561.
Thank you, council. Any questions at this time? Before I open the public hearing? So I will open the public hearing at 8:44. Is there any public comment on the phone? Any in the chamber? So I will close the public comment, the public hearing at 8:44. Cancel. So staff recommendation is to approve resolution. Any recommendations, motions? Motion to approve?
I will second it.
Motion on the floor by Councilmember Paul, second by Mayor Portem. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Upal?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Summer?
Yes.
Mayor Moran?
Yes.
Motion passes by vote of 5-0.
Thank you. Next, we have announcements and reports. We have city staff announcements and reports by Jackie Benoit, Recreation Superintendent.
Yes, I will be touching on the Rexplex. But any other item that any of the staff members would like to talk to council about in the public are welcome to come up to the podium. Looks like we don't have any presentations from any other department heads. So at this moment in time, what I would like to do is, I know that Mr. Alonso, who represents PG&E, is here. I would like him to allow him a space to come to the podium if he has anything that he would like to share. The rates are going to go down, yay!
Well, good evening, mayor, council, and Jose Antonio and the team here in Livingston. I just wanted to come by and give a quick update on a couple of key items that we have at Pacific Gas and Electric. So, three important things. Number one, we filed our general rate case, which is the way that the utility is funded. Every three years, we just filed the one that goes from 2027 to 2030. And for the first time in 15 years, there will be no electric rate increase requests in the general rate case. The other thing that we're seeing is that now that a lot of wildfire cost recoveries have concluded, and a lot of our recovery from the 2021 Atmospheric River Year, now that those have concluded, those are now being taken off the bill. And what we're seeing today is that the price per kilowatt hour on the electric front is lower today than it was a year ago. And further, as these costs continue to fall off the bill, the price per kilowatt hour will be lower at the end of the year than it is today. And that is in around the 4% ballpark. I wanted to come before all of you this evening too, to request to come back, maybe in the third or fourth quarter, and give you a more detailed view of what the general rate case is going to look like. Some efforts that we'll have underway to do small business outreach here in the city to make sure that small businesses are on the correct rate plan, or seeing if we can get folks on the economic development rate, which is a 20% discount on their price per kilowatt hour. Anything that we can do to, one, keep business open, keep business competitive, and keep it here? We're happy to do so. And we'd like to come and offer to be present during the Sugar Beet Festival. Sweet potato. Sorry.
Close enough.
Listen, I'm from Farwell. It's the Cantaloupe Roundup, there's the Cotton Festival in Dos Palos. Listen, one of the grocery store items, the festival for that, I'll be here. So, yes, Sweet Potato Festival. We love sweet potatoes, and we'll find a way to come back, bring some customer service officers to staff a booth and help enroll residents in Carrefour to help them obtain those discounts. So those are a couple of quick updates. Wanted to come by, wanted to see all of you, wanted to see my friend, Gru Paul, and wanted to make a commitment to come back and give a more detailed view later on. So thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Yes, and so three quick items, and then I want to end my staff presentation with the Rexplex. I just wanted to share with council that I've been working on some policies, very much needed. You know, policies are always really, well, really good, just to provide some clear guidance to staff and the community. One of those is the banner policy. And so as you, as you come into our main downtown, you'll notice that we, the city, owns two, well, actually four poles, and we have these four-by-30 banners. So there's, so I'm working on a banner policy for that. That does not necessarily include, at this time, the banners on all the light poles. I'll be incorporating that later, but I at least wanted to work on that banner policy. Number two is the digital sign policy. Of course, we have our marquee sign right across the street, and so I'm working on that. And where I'm going to need a little help is from council is, I'm working also on a delegation of purchasing authority. And I think it's a good time to kind of update some numbers. We have to come to council for that. We have to address it in our ordinance. And then also, but this document itself will actually provide and help staff and guide them on, you know, several procedures as it relates to purchasing and bids and all those things. So I'm working on that. Finally, the, on the Rexplex. I, as soon as I got, I started on March 17th. You know, this is a really major and a very important project. I started March 17th of this year for the legal counsel and the audience. And this is a very important project for the city in many aspects. And so trying to get, you know, my, get a good perspective of what's actually happening, what needs to get done, where we're at, talking to the two firms that the city hired, talking to staff. And so what I've, what I've been able to, you know, glean from all of this is that we're going to have to take a multi-pronged approach in order to, you know, address the needs that, the elements that we said that we were going to do as part of the grant that we received. We received a $7.3, $7.4 million grant, of which a certain dollar amount was used to actually purchase the actual building. And so I've been able to talk to these different folks, and I basically have said, of all the wants, just focus on the needs and making sure that we address those items that the grant requires us to actually complete. Why? Because we only have until December of 2027 in order to, you know, meet those grant requirements. And so when I said that we need to take a multi-pronged approach, you know, we want to be able to raise some funds, you know, from different businesses in town, make sure that we outreach to our public, and that we're going to have different fundraising campaigns. We're looking to, you know, foundations. We're looking at some of the bigger corporations in this area, and we're going to be approaching some of these folks to see if council's open to naming rights for, you know, individual spaces like the basketball court, or the building itself, or the parking lot, who knows? And then we're also looking at all the different possible revenues in addition to the grant. So for instance, I've had some staff meetings where, you know, I've asked staff to identify funds, Measure V, that we can use, because keep in mind, there's onsite, and then there's off-site improvements. There's things that we can do that we don't even have to wait for other items to start that we can actually do. So off-site improvements, you got curbs, gutters, sidewalks. You got some areas where, you know, ADA issues exist that we can, you know, not wait for somebody to fall over there and address those. In addition to that, we're, you know, we have some grant writers that are looking for different grants. But, you know, with the grants, you never know, one, if you're going to get them, and two, if you do, how soon can you access those funds and actually get off the ground? But we're still going to go after them, because that project is going to be multi-phases. And so we're always going to look for funds. And then also to see what we can do to the building with some of our own employees so that, again, we can save on some of the demo costs and other areas of cost. And so our goal is to take a multi-pronged approach so that we can make that deadline and address, and just address those items that the grant, that we outlined in the grant. So at this moment in time, I'm happy to take any questions.
All right, so, and then, so on the topic, I was going to save it for my report, but on the topic, on the same, on the topic of the Rexplex, I think I do want to have a presentation or an update or a report be brought to council, because I know there's been questions by council members and also questions by residents in the community for which I don't think we have answers to. But it's more about updates, because I don't think we have had an update formally in the, for the council and for the community. If we can have an update from or by, in conjunction, you know, whether it's Recreation Director and the agencies that were contracted to do this work, or, you know. But I think it's important to be able to have an update. And I would prefer for them to also be present, just in case there are any questions, to make sure that any questions are answered at that time and not, you know, later on and so on. Because I think, you know, we're, I mean, I don't think we are running out of time, and just to make sure we're on the same page.
No, absolutely, Mayor. And again, I had to make sure that I was up to speed on what everything was happening or not happening. And so now that, you know, that I got a lot of data, and I know exactly where the project is at, we are going to have those two firms present, and then we're going to program it fairly quickly. It's after I asked staff, you know, when was, how many times have, you know, since this firm was hired, has actually presented to council? Because the only one that I was able to find was January of this year, 2025, when they came in. I'm not sure exactly what they presented. And then I think the only other presentation was when they were hired. So yes, they should have made more regular contact and updates to the council, and so that's going to change.
Can we expect that to be in two weeks?
Jackie, do you think that?
We have a meeting on Friday. We have a lot going on right now, and I would rather make sure we give correct information.
If you can come up to the podium.
We have a lot going on right now. There's like major transition with it on where we're at, where we're going, how we're going to get to where we're going. And I would rather make, we have a meeting with the state on Friday and with the folks, and Jose has become very actively involved, praise God. And so I would rather not do it in two weeks so that we have, I mean, unless you think that we can. But I would rather make sure you have good information than hopeful information.
So if not two weeks, the first meeting in July?
Yeah, I think the first meeting in July. And because I've given this particular firm direction, and, you know, the project that they were envisioning was going to cost the city $27 million, and we didn't have, we don't have the funds to address all of that. And so when I approached them, I basically focused them and said, you need to work on just those deliverables from the grant, and we're going to have to be creative. And that, you know, that's going to require a number of things. And I mentioned this a little bit in the budget workshop, which is, you know, council might want to a little bit in the budget workshop, which is, you know, Council might want to set aside some funds for this particular project besides fundraising, besides development back fees. We're looking at possibly going after some funds from, you know, some federal funding for community facilities for some of the items inside the facility. But what the atmosphere right now at the federal and state level, you know, there's a lot of question marks. So the focus is going to be just addressing the deliverables with the four-point-six, or four-point-six million dollars, something like that, plus whatever we've fundraised to date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Jackie, while you're up here, I know some months ago, you put on a presentation. You had those little cards with a QR code. I've had a few residents reach out to me, and they'd like to know what's going on, you know, play-by-play. Is that QR code on our website? And is it up to date?
Yeah, Prop sixty-eight, it's updated. Actually, there's no change in what the update is. So probably July, we'll be able to update it again. But yeah, if they go to that QR code, it goes right to the Prop sixty-eight update page.
All right, thank you.
All right, okay. Mr. Mayor, one quick ask.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, you had made a comment on wants versus needs, which I think is a great thing to look at at this point, considering the funding gap. When we bring the item back, can we have, can we clearly compare the two of what the state is requiring that's open at the end of 2027 versus the things we might want?
Yeah, so as a matter of fact, today I received from the firms two or three different alternatives in terms of approach. And, and so, yeah, so the focus right now is just on those deliverables. And like I said, we have to be creative, and we, and I have, I personally think that we can do this, but it's going to require some creativity and us all working together to make that project come to fruition.
We actually have a schematic of the needs and what the prop has, or what the proposition has asked for with the list, and we can mail that or even email that to you guys to take a good look at it.
Thank you. All right. Anything else? All right, so next we have City Council Members Announcements and Reports. Mr. Wallace?
I already did the main part. The other part, it was for Memorial Day function at the park up here, and it was well-attended. And it's an honor to go there and still be able to get to it every year. I just want to thank the VFW for putting it on. And I know the other two council members that went were also impressed, I believe.
Thank you. Mr. Roth?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I was at both those events. Mr. Wallace is at the memorial and also the car show at the Rexplex. That was a great turnout. There's a lot of people there. Food was excellent. That was a great idea, having the trucks there. So kudos to you again, Jackie. Thank you. Oh, one more thing. I'd just like to remind the community, on June eighteenth at five-thirty at Memorial Park, we're planning on having the memorial to Lupi and Aurora Garcia. The cement is laid and the plaque is ready to go. Looks excellent. Thank you, Anthony, and everyone else who was involved. So again, June eighteenth at five-thirty. Thank you.
Councilmember Upal?
Yeah. Quick echo from Mr. Roth. Our car show, that fundraiser, was awesome. I loved it. That is the first event of that type that I've gone to in the city, and there was a nice buzz there. And essentially, everybody that I spoke to, whether it was staff, our folks like Mr. Castillo, who came and provided vendor services, or people, were really excited about expanding this and turning it into something bigger. I really want to thank not just our staff for helping put it on, but also the vendors that are dedicated to the community. Diego's one of them, shows up at every council meeting, is always open to helping putting those events forward. Our folks at Sueno Coffee spoke to him at the event. He said they almost didn't end up opening in Livingston, but they were happy that it worked out, and now they're heavily invested in our community. And so whatever we can do to help build on stuff like that, we want to support it because I think there's a really exciting trend that can come from that event. Really quick, sorry, let me get back to my notes. We, I wanted to congratulate our Livingston High School Boys Volleyball Team. As I'm sure most of you know, they played in the Division Four State Championship for boys volleyball this past Saturday. They're the first team, they're the first sports, high school team in Livingston High School's history to have played in a state championship, which is huge for us. We've never gone that far. They did not come out on top in state. They played one of the biggest private schools in the country, let alone the state of California. But they did, they were the last remaining public school in the division, which I think is super cool. And a lot of those kids are young, a lot of sophomores and juniors on that team that should be coming back. So it'll be exciting to see the run that they make. I would like to bring them in, assuming the schedules work out for their coaches and their players. So the seniors are already out of school, the kids are going out this week, but I would love to recognize them in the chambers. I want to let you all know now, and I will reach out to Coach Mike Alverness and those folks and see if we can get them in here, because it's really nice to see our town go out and represent the way they did. And that's it for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Portem?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. For me, I just want to say that, again, like everybody else, the Rexplex, it was a great turnout, a lot of folks there. Some people were surprised how big it is inside, and they were all kind of asking what we're going to do, and I told them to watch more council meetings. No, but, no, but everybody's excited about the options and ideas, you know? It was a great, it was really, really great. And then second, I also attended the Memorial Day. It was great. I got to get my, first of all, we got to honor all of our folks, the service people, and then I got to hit up on the, you know, Dennis Wells and their granny cake and everything else. It was great, you know? What a way to top off a day. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. So I did miss some of the activities on that weekend because I was out of town, but I did get some great feedback also from the car show and from some residents that were asking me, where is this going to be? And, you know, it's like, and even though the address was right there on the flyer, but I'm always, you know, willing to share that as well and let them know exactly where it was. And they liked the car show, you know, all the food trucks, and just like you guys mentioned before, it's just that energy that was there. It was very energetic, and they were very enthusiastic based on their feedback. So I wasn't able to be there. And then also, on Saturday, it was the state championship for the volleyball team at the high school. But, you know, they are CIF champions, they were just not able to go a step further to be state champions, which is still an accomplishment. I mean, I do believe they've been CIF champions for the last three years. I think I saw the banner at the gym, and I was, you read my mind, Mr. Upal, I was, I've been in contact with Mr. Scott Winton about planning a day not too far into the summer because kids will be all over the place, to be able to bring him, invite him into the council chambers and recognize them. And then also, I was planning on inviting the, our state representatives to also be here and recognize them as well. So we'll probably have to finalize a date sometime this week before kids are gone into their summer activities. But other than that, that's it. And so with that, we're going to retire into closed session. We have four different items. We have item number one, conference with legal counsel pending litigation pursuant to paragraph four of subdivision D of Government Code, section five-four-nine-five-six-point-nine, John Marco versus City of Livingston, case number two-three-ZV-oh-one-six-four-seven. Item number fourteen, conference with legal counsel. Item number fifteen, Government Code, public employee appointment, employment title, city attorney. And number sixteen, conference with labor negotiator, Mr. Jose Antonio Ramirez, City Manager, with employee organizations, clerical bargaining unit, police supervisory employees, management and confidential, and Livingston Police Officers Association. And we'll be back. So, okay, I'll go ahead and provide opportunities for public comment. Is there anyone on the phone in regards to the closed session items? Nine oh nine, bringing it back into the chamber. Any citizen comments in the chamber? See none closing the public comment on nine oh nine, and we'll be, we'll retire into closed session, and we'll be right back, well, as soon as we're done. I don't know what "right back" means, but we'll be back.